The Atlanta City Council adopts legislation authorizing the transfer of funds from the District 12, 1, 11, The Atlanta City Council adopts legislation authorizing the transfer of funds from the The Atlanta City Council adopts legislation authorizing the transfer of funds from the District 12, 1, 11, and 4's Consulting Professional Services account or participatory budget District 12, 1, 11, and 4's Consulting Professional Services account or participatory budget and 4's Consulting Professional Services account or participatory budget pilot program funds pilot program funds in a total amount not to exceed $175,000 to the Atlanta Police pilot program funds in a total amount not to exceed $175,000 to the Atlanta Police in a total amount not to exceed $175,000 to the Atlanta Police Foundation for the purchase Foundation for the purchase of security cameras within the respective districts. Foundation for the purchase of security cameras within the respective districts. of security cameras within the respective districts. The council approves a resolution condemning hate and extremism and affirming the city The council approves a resolution condemning hate and extremism and affirming the city The council approves a resolution condemning hate and extremism and affirming the city of Atlanta's ongoing commitment to cultivating an inclusive, safe, and just society and culture of Atlanta's ongoing commitment to cultivating an inclusive, safe, and just society and of Atlanta's ongoing commitment to cultivating an inclusive, safe, and just society and culture that values the diversity of the city's community, works to ensure equitable culture that values the diversity of the city's community, works to ensure equitable that values the diversity of the city's community, works to ensure equitable opportunities in opportunities in all major facets of society, and celebrates both individuality and commonality. opportunities in all major facets of society, and celebrates both individuality and commonality. all major facets of society, and celebrates both individuality and commonality. The council says yes to a resolution requesting three council committees conduct a feasibility The council says yes to a resolution requesting three council committees conduct a feasibility The council says yes to a resolution requesting three council committees conduct a feasibility study and gather recommendations for the establishment of the Department of Public Safety study and gather recommendations for the establishment of the Department of Public study and gather recommendations for the establishment of the Department of Public Safety and Wellness in Atlanta. Safety and Wellness in Atlanta. and Wellness in Atlanta. The council's Public Safety and Legal Administration, Community Development and Human Services, The council's Public Safety and Legal Administration, Community Development and Human Services, The council's Public Safety and Legal Administration, Community Development and Human Services, and Finance Executive Committees would be tasked with examining the creation of the and Finance Executive Committees would be tasked with examining the creation of the and Finance Executive Committees would be tasked with examining the creation of the new department and holding at least two work sessions with community partners, experts new department and holding at least two work sessions with community partners, experts new department and holding at least two work sessions with community partners, experts in public safety, and members of the public for feedback. in public safety, and members of the public for feedback. in public safety, and members of the public for feedback. The council greenlights a resolution requesting the city's chief operating officer to work The council greenlights a resolution requesting the city's chief operating officer to work The council greenlights a resolution requesting the city's chief operating officer to work with the Department of City Planning, Invest Atlanta, Atlanta Beltline Incorporated, Atlanta with the Department of City Planning, Invest Atlanta, Atlanta Beltline Incorporated, Atlanta with the Department of City Planning, Invest Atlanta, Atlanta Beltline Incorporated, Atlanta Housing, and the Atlanta Fulton County Land Bank to create a comprehensive, action-based Housing, and the Atlanta Fulton County Land Bank to create a comprehensive, action-based Housing, and the Atlanta Fulton County Land Bank to create a comprehensive, action-based plan to expedite the development of affordable workforce and supportive housing on vacant, plan to expedite the development of affordable workforce and supportive housing on vacant, plan to expedite the development of affordable workforce and supportive housing on vacant, publicly-owned land. publicly-owned land. publicly-owned land. For more recently-approved legislation, please visit our website, citycouncil atlantaga.gov. For more recently-approved legislation, please visit our website, citycouncil atlantaga.gov. For more recently-approved legislation, please visit our website, citycouncil atlantaga.gov. This has been your Atlanta City Council Legislative Minute. This has been your Atlanta City Council Legislative Minute. This has been your Atlanta City Council Legislative Minute.
I'm grateful for all of the partners that have come in today, once again, to show I'm grateful for all of the partners that have come in today, once again, to show I'm grateful for all of the partners that have come in today, once again, to show how much Atlanta is a caring community. how much Atlanta is a caring community. how much Atlanta is a caring community. You know, we have families that are hurting, that they are trying to take care of housing You know, we have families that are hurting, that they are trying to take care of housing You know, we have families that are hurting, that they are trying to take care of housing and food and making sure that all family members have safe winter clothing, clean and food and making sure that all family members have safe winter clothing, clean and food and making sure that all family members have safe winter clothing, clean winter clothing. winter clothing. winter clothing. These are brand-new coats, and we want the community to know that they don't have to These are brand-new coats, and we want the community to know that they don't have to These are brand-new coats, and we want the community to know that they don't have to be without. be without. be without. We have food giveaways, and now we are having a coat giveaway for families in need. We have food giveaways, and now we are having a coat giveaway for families in need. We have food giveaways, and now we are having a coat giveaway for families in need.
Some of these individuals, these young men, 20 years old, facing 77 years aggravated Some of these individuals, these young men, 20 years old, facing 77 years aggravated Some of these individuals, these young men, 20 years old, facing 77 years aggravated assault and having a weapon in their hand, and some of these crimes just triple and assault and having a weapon in their hand, and some of these crimes just triple and assault and having a weapon in their hand, and some of these crimes just triple and double. double, and these individuals have had to serve time, but they're in a program, a mentoring double, and these individuals have had to serve time, but they're in a program, a mentoring And these individuals have had to serve time, but they're in a program, a mentoring program program like the Next Level Boys Academy that's changing their lives, that shows them program like the Next Level Boys Academy that's changing their lives, that shows them like the Next Level Boys Academy, that's changing their lives, that shows them there's there's a better way, and they don't have to do these things anymore, and that they there's a better way, and they don't have to do these things anymore, and that they a better way, and they don't have to do these things anymore, and that they can take life can take life in their own hands by going out there and learning how to cut grass, get can take life in their own hands by going out there and learning how to cut grass, get in their own hands by going out there and learning how to cut grass, get a job, and a job, and they're better for it. a job, and they're better for it. they're better for it. Their wants and their needs are now known, so they don't have to go after things that Their wants and their needs are now known, so they don't have to go after things that Their wants and their needs are now known, so they don't have to go after things that they want and taking it from someone else. they want and taking it from someone else. they want and taking it from someone else. They can go after the things that they need, work hard for it, and keep working to get They can go after the things that they need, work hard for it, and keep working to get They can go after the things that they need, work hard for it, and keep working to get the things that they want. the things that they want. the things that they want. This is now a wonderful thing, and here at the gathering spot, they gave us the space, This is now a wonderful thing, and here at the gathering spot, they gave us the space, This is now a wonderful thing, and here at the gathering spot, they gave us the space, the opportunity to do it, and at the end of it, they're even offering some of these the opportunity to do it, and at the end of it, they're even offering some of these the opportunity to do it, and at the end of it, they're even offering some of these young men jobs, and some of the business community needed to hear that because they young men jobs, and some of the business community needed to hear that because they young men jobs, and some of the business community needed to hear that because they can also continue to offer these young men jobs. can also continue to offer these young men jobs. can also continue to offer these young men jobs. And that's one thing that's going on here, and that's why we wanted to do it, to show And that's one thing that's going on here, and that's why we wanted to do it, to show And that's one thing that's going on here, and that's why we wanted to do it, to show that there's a pathway out of poverty, and there's a pathway out of some of these poor that there's a pathway out of poverty, and there's a pathway out of some of these poor that there's a pathway out of poverty, and there's a pathway out of some of these poor choices that young men make. choices that young men make. choices that young men make. And right now, we heard from the DA, we heard from the sheriff, and we talked about solutions. And right now, we heard from the DA, we heard from the sheriff, and we talked about solutions. And right now, we heard from the DA, we heard from the sheriff, and we talked about solutions. And we're gonna keep doing that discussion as we make policies and plans to improve. And we're gonna keep doing that discussion as we make policies and plans to improve. And we're gonna keep doing that discussion as we make policies and plans to improve.
I'm Phyllis Jackson. I'm Phyllis Jackson. I'm Phyllis Jackson. Welcome to Stay at Home Connect. Welcome to Stay at Home Connect. Welcome to Stay at Home Connect. Coronavirus cases continue to place a burden on our healthcare systems. Coronavirus cases continue to place a burden on our healthcare systems. Coronavirus cases continue to place a burden on our healthcare systems. Georgia hospitals approaching 85% capacity of inpatient beds and 91% capacity of ICU Georgia hospitals approaching 85% capacity of inpatient beds and 91% capacity of ICU Georgia hospitals approaching 85% capacity of inpatient beds and 91% capacity of ICU beds. 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 The incoming Biden-Harris administration pushing for major expansion of federal funding The incoming Biden-Harris administration pushing for major expansion of federal funding The incoming Biden-Harris administration pushing for major expansion of federal funding in order to manifest his goal of administering 100 million COVID vaccinations within the in order to manifest his goal of administering 100 million COVID vaccinations within the in order to manifest his goal of administering 100 million COVID vaccinations within the first first 100 days of his presidency. first 100 days of his presidency. 100 days of his presidency. Two additional vaccine candidates are working to join Moderna and Pfizer in the fight Two additional vaccine candidates are working to join Moderna and Pfizer in the fight Two additional vaccine candidates are working to join Moderna and Pfizer in the fight against against COVID. against COVID. COVID. Officials with Johnson &amp; Johnson say the interim portion of its Phase III clinical Officials with Johnson &amp; Johnson say the interim portion of its Phase III clinical Officials with Johnson &amp; Johnson say the interim portion of its Phase III clinical trials involving 45,000 people revealed the vaccine was "generally well tolerated." trials involving 45,000 people revealed the vaccine was "generally well tolerated." trials involving 45,000 people revealed the vaccine was "generally well tolerated." As for the Oxford-AstraZeneca offering, data from four clinical trials indicate moderate As for the Oxford-AstraZeneca offering, data from four clinical trials indicate moderate As for the Oxford-AstraZeneca offering, data from four clinical trials indicate moderate efficacy. 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 Dr. Anthony Fauci says both vaccine candidates could be weeks away from evaluation from Dr. Anthony Fauci says both vaccine candidates could be weeks away from evaluation from Dr. Anthony Fauci says both vaccine candidates could be weeks away from evaluation from the FDA. the FDA. the FDA. With over 100 cases of the UK variant currently in the U.S., officials with the CDC say it's With over 100 cases of the UK variant currently in the U.S., officials with the CDC say it's With over 100 cases of the UK variant currently in the U.S., officials with the CDC say it's projected to grow rapidly and could become the predominant strain by March. projected to grow rapidly and could become the predominant strain by March. projected to grow rapidly and could become the predominant strain by March. This variant is said to be more contagious, but so far, there's no proof that the variant This variant is said to be more contagious, but so far, there's no proof that the variant This variant is said to be more contagious, but so far, there's no proof that the variant will lead to greater illness or more deaths. will lead to greater illness or more deaths. will lead to greater illness or more deaths. With an eye on this variant and others that are emerging, the agency has also expanded With an eye on this variant and others that are emerging, the agency has also expanded With an eye on this variant and others that are emerging, the agency has also expanded its requirement for a negative COVID test to all air travelers entering the United States. its requirement for a negative COVID test to all air travelers entering the United States. its requirement for a negative COVID test to all air travelers entering the United States. In addition to current CDC recommendations, air passengers will need to get a viral test In addition to current CDC recommendations, air passengers will need to get a viral test In addition to current CDC recommendations, air passengers will need to get a viral test for current infection within three days of their flight and provide written documentation for current infection within three days of their flight and provide written documentation for current infection within three days of their flight and provide written documentation to the airline. to the airline. to the airline. For specifics on the COVID-19 test requirement, you can go to the CDC's website at cdc.gov. For specifics on the COVID-19 test requirement, you can go to the CDC's website at cdc.gov. For specifics on the COVID-19 test requirement, you can go to the CDC's website at cdc.gov. The Internal Revenue Service's tax filing season begins February 12. The Internal Revenue Service's tax filing season begins February 12. The Internal Revenue Service's tax filing season begins February 12. This date will allow the agency time to do additional programming and test its systems This date will allow the agency time to do additional programming and test its systems This date will allow the agency time to do additional programming and test its systems following tax law changes, which led to a second round of economic impact payments following tax law changes, which led to a second round of economic impact payments following tax law changes, which led to a second round of economic impact payments due to COVID-19. due to COVID-19. due to COVID-19. The IRS says if you want a speedy refund, you will want to file your returns electronically The IRS says if you want a speedy refund, you will want to file your returns electronically The IRS says if you want a speedy refund, you will want to file your returns electronically with Direct Deposit. with Direct Deposit. with Direct Deposit. You can also file your taxes with tax software companies. You can also file your taxes with tax software companies. You can also file your taxes with tax software companies. That includes IRS Free File Partners. That includes IRS Free File Partners. That includes IRS Free File Partners. These partners are accepting tax returns now, and they will be sent to the IRS starting These partners are accepting tax returns now, and they will be sent to the IRS starting These partners are accepting tax returns now, and they will be sent to the IRS starting February 12. February 12. February 12. Atlanta City Council member Andrea Boone joins with Atlanta Police Leadership Institute, Atlanta City Council member Andrea Boone joins with Atlanta Police Leadership Institute, Atlanta City Council member Andrea Boone joins with Atlanta Police Leadership Institute, Badge to Family Outreach, Georgia Stand Up, and a group of volunteers for cleanup of Badge to Family Outreach, Georgia Stand Up, and a group of volunteers for cleanup of Badge to Family Outreach, Georgia Stand Up, and a group of volunteers for cleanup of the Martin Luther King Drive corridor in recognition of the King Holiday. the Martin Luther King Drive corridor in recognition of the King Holiday. the Martin Luther King Drive corridor in recognition of the King Holiday.
We want to make sure that the citizens know that we are here today. We want to make sure that the citizens know that we are here today. We want to make sure that the citizens know that we are here today. We're here to help them keep their environment clean. We're here to help them keep their environment clean. We're here to help them keep their environment clean. We're gonna be picking up trash, we'll be painting graffiti, we will be cleaning up We're gonna be picking up trash, we'll be painting graffiti, we will be cleaning up We're gonna be picking up trash, we'll be painting graffiti, we will be cleaning up many of the cracks and crevices that folks miss when they do normal cleanups. many of the cracks and crevices that folks miss when they do normal cleanups. many of the cracks and crevices that folks miss when they do normal cleanups. We've done a lot of work just to plan out this community cleanup. We've done a lot of work just to plan out this community cleanup. We've done a lot of work just to plan out this community cleanup.
Atlanta City Council member Natalie Archibong celebrates Martin Luther King Junior Atlanta City Council member Natalie Archibong celebrates Martin Luther King Junior Atlanta City Council member Natalie Archibong celebrates Martin Luther King Junior Day Day by co-sponsoring a community coat drive. Day by co-sponsoring a community coat drive. by co-sponsoring a community coat drive.
This is another example of the love and care that we have for one another. This is another example of the love and care that we have for one another. This is another example of the love and care that we have for one another. We're in a pandemic, and there's a lot of need out there, there's a lot of fear, and We're in a pandemic, and there's a lot of need out there, there's a lot of fear, and We're in a pandemic, and there's a lot of need out there, there's a lot of fear, and so this is one of those ways that we give back and share with our community. so this is one of those ways that we give back and share with our community. so this is one of those ways that we give back and share with our community. Commissioner Johnson is here with us as well, so this is an initiative that's Atlanta Commissioner Johnson is here with us as well, so this is an initiative that's Atlanta Commissioner Johnson is here with us as well, so this is an initiative that's Atlanta and the county. and the county. and the county. We're partnering with Workforce Strong, 258, and other, the YMCA, of course, to make We're partnering with Workforce Strong, 258, and other, the YMCA, of course, to make We're partnering with Workforce Strong, 258, and other, the YMCA, of course, to make sure that families in this area have winter coats for themselves and their children. sure that families in this area have winter coats for themselves and their children. sure that families in this area have winter coats for themselves and their children.
That's a wrap. That's a wrap. That's a wrap. We'll see you on the next edition of Stay at Home Connect. We'll see you on the next edition of Stay at Home Connect. We'll see you on the next edition of Stay at Home Connect.
One moment. Everyone, please vote. Well, everyone, I believe missed this.
I, I hit yes.
The votes closed, seven eight zero and eight, the meeting minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to hold off for a moment on the public safety, uh, our goals and objectives. I'd like to go into public comment and maybe flip up that for a moment. I've got to pull up my plan, my, my daily work on that. So can you all, go ahead with public comments? How many minutes of public comments do we have, Ms. Lindo?
Uh, we have seven minutes and forty-five seconds when Chair to play four comments.
Okay, alright, go ahead. Alright, we'll go ahead and start that. And if y'all have a look at your public safety goals and objectives, make sure you're ready. Thank you.
Should be up in one moment.
Pleading to you council members and staff, and special community citizens of Atlanta, monitoring your government in action. They're hours, senior advocates, public policy analysts. Crime is undermined by many in the city of Atlanta. Moving into the conversation about crime, there's talk about residents breaking off and forming a new city up north, and whether or not the Atlanta jail should be continued in this present form. Proposed by some in Buckhead is a crime fighting unit which would be called Buckhead Blue, and which may emulate this town blue already in existence. I call upon the NPUR nine to initiate discussion about another crime fighting unit, which would be called Southwest Blue. Southwest Blue would raise this Atlanta police zone for officers to make life better for the citizens to reside within neighborhood planning unit R and along the Campbellton Road and Cascade Road corridors. Southwest Blue would also partner with the NPUR Public Safety Committee if and when the Public Safety Committee is ever allowed by the NPUR nine. From the looks of things, it was not. The NPUR online has united Anthony Robinson to be the vice chair of NPUR. No secretary has been elected for NPUR. The NPUR chair is also doubling as APAS Destiny and meetings of the Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, because no APAS Destiny has been agreed upon as required by NPUR bylaw. And Sherry Williams has been attempting to convince Atlanta that more affordable senior housing than the green light area is not desirable, so public safety is not on the minds of the NPUR nine. Councilman Peter Robinson, Callis Claire, Ricardo Jacobs, Alvis Page, Renato Scott, Allison Hathaway, Sherry Williams, and the NPUR nine cohorts and supporters.
APD SOP three zero five year, two state counties, they signed twelve thirty twenty twenty. Okay. To establish guidelines based on state law and court decisions, if these processes are entrusted to motor vehicles within an outside facility or somewhere, all states, the Atlanta Police Department beginning, this is the highest value on the participation rate in the safety of this state's activities. And this is used to inform law should maximize the safety of all people involved. The decision was to the vehicle that it used to alter its traffic point in order to be able to do some official business, not any personal or personal damage. A report must comply with the statute of, based on T U A section forty six, thirty-eight ninety, forty-eight ninety-one, forty-eight ninety-four, and seventeen four twenty. Max number eighty B is that they're allowed to directly be involved in the court of state duty. Okay. Some realities. Additional sections and unit commanders will also be ensuring that all boys and neutral commands apply to the fire and heat directive. The branch will know it's doubtful for ensuring compliance with this directive, and the district provides augmentation for essential representatives. All employees are responsible for compliance of the fire and heat directive. Essential representatives will be the officials that practice voice of the state department. The signing of this change of legislation will also review all the state reports. The opposite suggestion, there is one that's been reported, one that's been expected in three years for violation, rising smoke and heat. And please, APD SOP twenty twenty disciplinary protocol. Action. The opposite of the interest to vehicle or to vehicle support. We only engage in the first instance, but one, the direct launch, so it's a specific scenario of first movement. Two, the same as the last, we can fix it in a way that it's possible by motion. We still have to have strike now, just in hand. Three, the six of each equipment, the energy, the energy exchange, the steering, all the injuries, to the officer and to another person. That's the, the whole, the, 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 the,[535.14]
And we need to figure out how to get to full staffing on our trucks. And that's obviously a problem across a whole range of departments, whether it's police or code enforcement, et cetera. But I don't want that to get lost in the public safety conversation that we have over the course of the year. So I don't, you know, I'm happy to have it worded anyway, but I just think we need to pay special attention to fire rescue staffing and how they're staffing trucks.
Thank you, Mr. Faroki. And as a matter of fact, I think that's great. And we should come back, even though the mayor's made a statement as to how many they're going to hire, we should put that on our goals this year, not only for fire, but for the police department, full staffing, coming back and giving updates, reports on how we will be trying to make sure our staff is fully deployed for police and fire. So great thoughts and ideas. We'll make sure we put that on there. But I'm going to add the police department also.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Councilwoman Shepherd, this is Councilmember Hillis again. Just speaking of the fires, two items. One, I would like to leave the AFRD Fire Station's any renovation or replacement on there. I know there are a lot of pending renovations to renew. And I know as far as replacement goes, we just, they're finally moving ground on the Station 22 replacement in my district. So we're looking forward to moving forward and addressing more stations that need to be, need to be replaced or renovated. So we'll just ask for an updated report of that. And the second item, which kind of ties into Councilmember Faroki, as far as, you know, getting our staffing levels up. I know we've received previous presentations from Chiefs, former Chief Sauter now, and he was, you know, seemed to be fully against a lateral program, but I would really like to have this committee look into that and have a presentation on how that would work and the benefits of that.
Thank you. So we will keep another update for this year on where we are with Atlanta Fire Stations, updates, intended renovations or replacements, and also what you just stated. Ms. Linda, I hope you're capturing all of this.
I am, Madam Chair. And I will send it to the committee upon conclusion of the input and...
Okay, okay. Anything else? All right. So with that, thank you so much for all of those updates. And we'll look for a report by our next meeting. We will go over that report one more time, Ms. Linda, to make sure we have everything that is comprehensive, and then we'll move forward. So we're now, public comments are finished, our goals are executed. We're now at presentation, and our first presentation is going to be from the Atlanta Police Department, and I believe it's going to be Deputy Chief Coy. Is that correct?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, it's going to be Assistant Chief Coy. We can go to slide number two, please. I'll start out by talking about street racing. This past week, we had over 100 traffic stops. And those 100 traffic stops, there were six physical arrests, and out of those arrests, only one person lived in Atlanta. So we're still seeing a lot of people coming from out, from out of the state and from metro Atlanta into the city to commit these violations. Of those violations, three of the individuals were arrested for DUI, and two were arrested for participating in street racing. So the citations ran the gamut. The majority of them were for speeding. So the individuals that are participating in these acts definitely are coming here to act in some reckless behavior. Of the six people that were cited, well, I'm sorry, of those individuals that were cited, six of them were cited for the loud exhaust violation. Since City Council has helped us out with the ordinance, we cited 62 people for the loud exhaust ordinance. So we can see that it is definitely helping us, and the message is being put out, although people are still coming in, the message is being put out. The predominant areas that the individuals continue to go in are the downtown area and also the north part of the city, closely followed by the Zone 6 area or the Edgewood part of the city. What we found is that they come in because of the glitz and glamour of the landscape. While they're doing this, they also attempt to take pictures and get the backdrop of, example, the Mercedes-Benz Stadium. They try and get those pictures in their backdrop so they can post it on social media. But we feel like we're, we're getting better, although we continue to have these issues. Can we go to slide number four, please? Slide number four, I'll talk about some of our, our crime trends and issues. We continue to have a challenge with violent crimes, more specifically the homicides and aggravated assaults. With the homicides, we currently have nine homicides for, for the year. We're finding that for homicides and aggravated assaults, our victims and the suspects lack the conflict resolution skills. So instead of talking it out, they start fighting or they escalate it to gunplay. Last week, we had three homicides, and of those three homicides, two of them were cleared. So our homicide unit and our officers on, on the street are doing an excellent job in arresting the people that are participating in these acts. We just have to find a way to stop the act before it gets to that point. Speaking on aggravated assault, again, it's the no conflict resolution. Most of the participants know each other. We continue to arrest, arrest the suspects in the majority of the cases, but again, we want to stop it before it continues. And I bring that up because we've asked for the community's help to keep Atlanta safe. Some of the things we have done for the, we have done and continue to do to try and affect these crimes is that APD has started profiling Atlanta's Most Wanted. This was started right around Thanksgiving, and since we started profiling the Most Wanted, we've gotten four people off of the top 10 Most Wanted list. By doing this, the calls for crime stoppers has increased. We've also expanded our partnerships with our state, federal, and local partners, because we know that individuals come into Atlanta from other locations, and after they commit the crimes, they go out to other locations. So in partnering with the other entities, it helps us arrest these individuals. We've intensified our focus on the armed and violent criminals, and some of the ways we've done this is our Apex Team, which is our tactical crime unit. We've added some additional investigators to that team so they can focus on the drug houses and the drug locations. Also, our intelligence unit continues to work with our other state and local and federal partners so we can identify and share information with everyone and make not only Atlanta, but metro Atlanta a safer place to be. We are already working with Fulton County Sheriff and the new Fulton County District Attorney on ways to enhance our partnership. And you, you will start seeing Fulton County Sheriff's Officers and APD Officers together in more areas. So that should be a welcome sight to the residents of Atlanta, and we believe by doing this and partnering with them, we'll be able to bring stronger cases to the court and arrest people that have committed the crimes in a faster fashion. We are also continuing with our Operation Phoenix. Operation Phoenix, a quick rundown of that, it's a coordinated effort to focus on the violent repeat offenders. And some of our partners in that are going to be the GBI, the U.S. Attorney's Office, Homeland Security, ATF, and DEA, and also the Secret Service. So we feel like that's helping us already. We've been able to arrest 14 violent offenders within the city, and we continue to add more people and look for more people so we can, we can handle that. Can we, oh, well, no, leave it at this. I'll speak on the auto theft. Auto thefts continue to be a problem for the city. Most of our cars that are stolen, the vehicles have been left running. If they're not left running, the keys or key fob continue to be left in the car. Also, a good majority of the food delivery service vehicles are being stolen also. They'll run into an apartment building or run up to a house, but leave their cars on. I say that because year-to-date, about 67% of the stolen vehicles have been left running or left with the cars, or left with the keys in the car. Our ACE Unit, which is our auto crimes enforcement unit, and also Zones 2 and Zone 5, because they have been impacted the most, have been working in a combined effort to apprehend these criminals. Many of the suspects are young adults or teenagers, and we have a number of outstanding warrants for these individuals, and the warrants range from theft by taking to insurance fraud. So it, again, it runs the gamut, but we are doing everything we can to, to bring these numbers down. An example of that is over this past weekend, there was an incident at Fifth Plaza where we were able to arrest six individuals that were in the parking lot breaking into cars. There was a sheriff's deputy from Newton County that was there, that was able to see the individuals, and he was able to call it out, and because we had units close to the area, they were able to respond in a, a quick fashion and arrest all six individuals that were breaking into the cars. And the reason they're focusing on shopping plazas and malls is because individuals are leaving the cars unlocked or the cars have the keys, the keys still in them. And can we go to the last slide? That'll be the calls for service. As you see, this past week, calls for service were down about 2% compared to the previous year. But as we've seen lately, our calls, the call volume is starting to pick up, even though we're still in COVID protocol, the calls are beginning to pick up quite a bit. With that, our officers are still very busy and very engaged, but I wanted to have this slide shown because some of the council members have asked for, for this also. With that, I will stop and see if anyone has any questions for them.
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Councilmember Winslow. I've got a couple, couple of questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Winslow.
Thank you. Just want to thank Deputy Chief Coy for a, a good presentation. And I guess I want to go back maybe about 15 years, and it's, it's more with some of the, I guess, some of the clubs. I know that when we have, had the 559 Club in West End, that when there was a killing some years back, that club was shut down, it was not allowed to, and I think their liquor license was revoked. So moving forward, and let me go, let me speed it up, to Blue Ivy on Whitehall Street, that's between North Side Drive and McDaniel Street. Back in 2017, before the Super Bowl, there was a shooting, I can't remember if somebody got killed or not, but I, I can't remember if their license was pulled or was temporarily suspended, but they could not operate for the Super Bowl, because somebody called me and asked me to intercede on their behalf to get it back, oh, to get their license reinstated before the Super Bowl, and I refused to do that. And so now I'm kind of going to the Monaco Club that's on Trinity between Ted Turner and Forsyth Street. And that club is back open again, and as we both know, there was, I don't know, four people shot or two people killed, I can't remember, maybe about two months ago, but they're open again. And so is, is there something different that was maybe done 15 years ago where people couldn't come back and get their liquor license? I mean, I know you've been with the police department a long time, but you may not be familiar with all the ins and outs of what I'm speaking of, but is there any way that you can speak to that? There seems to be a difference or a movement away from shutting some of these clubs down that are not doing the right thing, and now more of them are allowed to remain open or only be shut down for a short period of time, maybe a month, and then open again.
Yes, ma'am. When you spoke about the Blue Ivy, there were a, a number of things that, that were done, and the permit was pulled for the Blue Ivy, and it shut them down temporarily. What we've been doing is working with the city solicitor's office, code enforcement, the fire department, a number of other entities around the city and the state. I'll say the state because there were some health violations and other things that we asked the state entities to come in and help us with. So we're trying to use any and all ordinances and laws to shut down these clubs slash restaurants that are violating the law. I don't want to go too deep into it because there are some things that the city solicitor is helping us do, where we are focused on a couple of clubs around the city that have continued to violate the ordinances and laws. But there is something that we are working on, and it is not just the Atlanta Police Department. As I stated, I've named a couple of other ones, i.e. the fire department and code enforcement and the city solicitor, where we are all combining our heads and we have a game plan to attack these entities that are, are in constant violation. Some of the things that have hindered us were the, are the way that some of the city ordinances and state laws are written, that we have to make sure that we are doing things the right way and put together a complete story. So when we go in front of a judge, the judge will understand the effect that it not only had on that particular incident, but the effect that it's having on the community that the club is in. So I say all of that to say, we are working on something.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the explanation, and I, I can appreciate the fact that you don't want to say too much, and, and so I'll leave it there. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Deputy Coy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Winslow. The next person to speak is Mr. Faroki, followed by Mr. Bond. Mr. Faroki.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Assistant Chief Coy. Two topics, one brief, maybe one a little bit deeper. One on the loud exhaust. I was mildly disappointed to only see six citations over the last week, but I, I know you all have been making it a priority over the last couple of months. I would just encourage you to continue to do so. I get the most complaints from residents, less about street racing, though it's still happening, but more just about the disruption from the noise of the modified mufflers, even as folks are cruising through town. So thank you all for your attention on that. And then the, the second item, you, you mentioned, I thought it was telling, you mentioned that a lot of the violent crime and the homicides are a result, in your opinion, or the department's opinion on, or due to a lack of conflict resolution skills, and that's, that struck a chord in me, because I think it's probably right. And I, I guess the question I have is, you know, is the department, as it approaches its next year fiscal budget, or even in how it wants to problem-solve the spike in violent crime we're seeing, is there any attention being paid to kind of, I guess, non-traditional programs on public safety? And the one that comes to mind is a program in Oakland, it's probably in a few other cities, called Operation Peacefire, and it, it made the observation similar to what you made, which is, you know, these are ultimately, you know, bad decisions made in the heat of the moment, and oftentimes by a fairly small part of our population, you can look at violent crime, and it, you could probably identify less than 500 folks in a city of 500,000 who are committing most of the violent crime. And so you can pretty quickly figure out how to reach out to people in a non-arrest setting, right, in, in trade mentorship programs and other programs to help navigate these situations more peacefully. And so I guess the question I have for you is, is the department thinking in that way at all, whether it's partnering with nonprofits outside of the city or using the police department's own budget to be more nuanced in, in how we approach filing crime?
Yes, sir. We are looking at, at those things. A, a good example would be our, the victim witness advocates. They are partnered with our homicide units and our robbery and our gun assault teams, along with some other sexual assault teams. They go out to the, well, not out to, sometimes they go out to the scenes, but they talk with the victims and attempt to speak with the victims and let them know some of the resources they have. So that's a quick example I can give. The example you gave of what's happening in Oakland, yes, we have looked at that. Although we don't have that same system, some of the things we are doing is our intelligence unit. We believe a lot of what happens is, we, we can prevent it, and sometimes we do prevent it, if we know the players in the game. And sometimes when someone is shot or a homicide happens, if we can get those individuals to the table and let them know we are watching them, we can slow down the, the other violence that is going to stop. But this is happening too much, and one of the reasons I stated we ask for the community's help is because a lot of times, they don't want to talk to the victim witness advocate, they don't want to talk to us. So we, we try and get the word out to as many people as possible, because we cannot do it without the community's help. But we are looking and listening for any and every other idea that is out there.
I appreciate that. I, I, I mean, I'm one of 15 members of council and one of many residents of the city, but I, I tend to look at the police department's toolbox as a combination of hard power and soft power. And the hard power approach is obviously, I think, what we think of most commonly with the police department. You know, surveillance, apprehension, you know, proactive policing, whatever it may be. But I, I think there's an opportunity to flex more soft power in a, in a more human way, and, and an example came to mind. A decade ago, I had the luck of going on this trip to Europe with a bunch of folks, and we got to meet with all these different types of people in different cities, but one of the people we, one of the groups we met with was the, the intelligence service in Denmark, so the equivalent of the Danish CIA, and we met with the head of their counterterrorism unit, and they made an interesting, they, they approached things in an interesting way that stuck with me to this day, that I still think has application at the local level too, which was, they said, look, you know, they compared it to the Americans, they said, I like the Americans, you know, we won't kick someone's door down and go arrest them because we know that they're part of a terrorist cell. The first thing we do is we go knock around their door and say, hey, we know that you're part of this group, or we see you in these chat rooms, just know we're watching, but if you want to talk to us about it, come talk to us about it. And they had remarkable success at stopping, in this case, terrorist acts, because they realized pretty quickly that most people who end up in terrorist cells, I mean, the same could maybe be applied, and I'm not a criminologist, but the same could probably be applied in, in gang situations or other violent crime situations. Most people who end up in these situations, you know, they oftentimes want a way out, but they don't have a way to get out because no one has offered them a way out. And, and just the mere act of a police officer or an intelligence officer saying, hey, if you want to talk about it, or come talk to us, we can help you work through this, creates an outlet for them to then make a different choice that has a non-violent outcome. And so I, I always think about that at the local level, like, are there things we can be doing, whether it's the city itself, the police department itself, or partnering with outside entities, nonprofits, others who have that skill set, to better intervene so we're reducing the chances of this happening? And some of this is, to your point, is intelligence gathering, but some of it's just pure human connectivity and, and how we're interfacing with folks. So I, I will get off my soapbox, but I, I'm glad that y'all are thinking on these lines and encourage you to continue to do so.
Yes, thank, thank you. I would also throw out the, the At Promise Center. The At Promise Center is a conglomeration of a lot of different social organizations that help us out, and they, they do everything that, that you just spoke of, and they also will help people with finding jobs or finding places to live, to give them other opportunities. So we do, we do realize that we cannot arrest ourselves out of this situation, and we're trying to do anything and everything we can to partner with other organizations to, to help us stop the crime and stop the violence, but, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Faroki. Mr. Bond, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Deputy Steve Coy, for your presentation. I just have a, a couple of quick questions. One, pivoting back to street racing, it seems that, I spoke with many residents in Midtown and Lower Buc- Buckhead over the weekend, that a lot of, well, there's that particular group seems to come through their community pretty much on a, you could almost set your watch by the end of the weekend, usually between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. And so I, I heard you mention that there will be greater coordination with the incoming sheriff and, and the deputies. Can you expand on that?
Well, the Fulton County deputies, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of, of Sheriff Labott, but they will be helping us in our problem areas. They will be helping us go after individuals that have outstanding warrants. They will be helping us with the street racing details. At this point, I can't tell you if it's going to be five days a week, seven days a week, but they will be, we will be working with them in a proactive fashion more than we have in the past. And we, we look forward to it because, as you stated, that 4:00 and 6:00 time, timeframe daily is typically one of the busiest times for the beat officers. So the beat officers are typically going to handle 911 calls as opposed to driving around the street trying to stop someone with a, a traffic violation. But the new partnership with the Fulton County Sheriff's will, will definitely help us with that.
And thank you. And as a follow-up to that, you mentioned the social media component. I've gotten tagged over the last week a lot on Facebook from, from constituents who are seeing these social media posts, not only on street racing, but everything from street racing to COVID-19 violations, you know, in workout rooms and et cetera. But as, as it focuses on street racing, that's one of the things that struck me as a, really as a third move on the federal level around the insurrection a few weeks ago, that they were tracking a lot of these individuals that they were pursuing through their social media posts in a partnership with the carriers. Having said that, you mentioned that part of the component of what these groups are doing is they, they want the backdrop of, you know, popping a wheelie in front of the dome or down Peachtree Street, what have you. Have you all been in communication with any of the, you know, carriers or Facebook, any of the social media people to see if that's a way to try to track some of these folks down?
I will say that we have used social media to take out warrants on individuals that have committed some of the violations. I'll, I'll... I'll leave it at that. We have used social media to, as evidence, to arrest some of these individuals.
Okay, just one more part of that. I seem to have gotten a lot of tags around the COVID-19 kind of quote-unquote enforcement. People have, I guess people are still going to, I guess, workout facilities and I've got a couple of pictures I was tagged in where you wouldn't think COVID-19 ever existed because there's so many people in this particular spot. And they're also relating to me that there's a lot of promotion going on on social media to come to Atlanta to engage in all of these activities, whether it's going to the club or the street racing aspect. How are you all combating that? Is that still, would that still lie in your intelligence unit? I mean, how are you all doing following up with that type of promotion for people to come to Atlanta to kind of engage in their COVID-19 or street racing violations?
Well, our intelligence unit provides us with information. We get a lot of emails, texts, phone calls from individuals in the city, from citizens, telling us about some of these events. So with the help of the fire department and some other entities, our license and permits unit goes out to the clubs that are habitual violators or the clubs that we know have an event planned. And because of the stipulations with the governor's order, we have to give warnings and then give out a couple of citations before we can go to the next step of arresting and shutting the club down. So we have done that. And we are using our intelligence to gather some of this information to visit these locations.
Is there a particular office or officer within APD that I can refer these citizens to to make these reports? Because I'll forward you what I was tagged in, but it seems to be increasing that they're tagging me and wanting me to pass on the information.
Yes, well, the commander of our license and permits unit is Lieutenant Cotter. You can send it to me and I will forward it over to Lieutenant Cotter. But Lieutenant Cotter is the one that puts together the details pretty much every weekend when they are going out visiting these locations.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll withdraw.
Thank you all for those questions. Is there anyone else with questions? With that, I'm going to make sure I get your name right, Assistant Chief Coy, not Deputy Chief. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, but that's fine. That's fine, yes.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure. I was thinking about that when you called. I called you wrong and everybody else followed, but it's Assistant Chief Coy. So thank you for coming, presenting today and for the continued updates. We really appreciate this. This is so important right now as we're having all these crime issues in our communities. And so we will continue to look forward to having your presentations on every other week basis. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. We're now at item number two of the presentations, which is the Public Defender's Office quarterly update. Mr. Kenneth Day, our chief public defender, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we're ready.
Very good. Good afternoon, council members, and to the citizens of the city that are viewing our department's presentation as well. I am Ken Days. I am the Director and Chief Public Defender for the City of Atlanta's Office of the Public Defender. For those that may be unaware, we are an office of attorneys, social workers, client advocates, investigators, and support staff that represent, really in a normal year, approximately 25,000 cases. In this past calendar year, 2020, that number is roughly about 10,000 to 15,000 cases. So we're a holistic, client-centered law office that seeks to address and constitutionally defend not only the accused charged, but also the underlying circumstances that may have forced an encounter with law enforcement in the first place. Effectively, the Atlanta Public Defender operates more as a community law office for the city, which statistically and really because of the methodologies we use, is more cost-effective than most punitive measures utilized from an enforcement standpoint. And when you consider cycling a defendant through arrest, prosecution, and adjudication, that cycle typically costs the taxpayers about $400 for misdemeanor cases per defendant. And so if you have a mental health component with that case as well, that figure is substantially escalated. So what we do as an office daily is work to decrease that taxpayer cost while simultaneously recruiting and dispensing the best qualified and best trained advocates to assist the citizens of Atlanta that we serve. And we have been nationally recognized multiple times for our best practices and efforts. Today, as is consistent with most of our presentations to this committee, I'd like to show a snapshot of some of the work that has come from our department this last quarter, mostly outside of the legal motions and trial strategy and courtroom advocacy. If you could forward to slide two, please. It isn't surprising or undeniable to most that food insecurity remains a constant problem in the metro community. And while many of you on this committee, this committee have worked tirelessly to alleviate this issue amongst your constituencies, it unfortunately remains. Inasmuch as we as a department confront food insecurity amongst our client base daily, our staff has made this a priority in the work that we do amongst our 25 or so active community partners. So what's shown on this slide is the work that we were fortunate to accomplish alongside the Fountain of Hope Food Bank and Urban Recipe Food Cooperative to provide food to those who are in immediate need. Slide three, please. Within the previous two months, In-Town Collaborative Ministries, which is a community partner for the Office of the Public Defender, In-Town Collaborative was able to place multiple individuals in permanent housing. And so our staff supported those efforts for the families that were placed with a number of personal donations of toys and clothes and sports equipment and household goods, which I think you can see in the picture there alongside some of our staff members. If we could go to slide four, please. Since we as a public defender office support defending accusations of misdemeanor crimes, we're also always encouraged with the work that we do alongside the City of Atlanta Department of Corrections. And I always love to state the statistics that are represented on this slide because they're not necessarily an anomaly, but very much reflective of the daily efforts that are presented by our social work and client advocate staff. So in fact, these statistics really highlight the quantitative value of having social workers and client advocates on our staff. So they provide a daily engagement and mental health assessments, and these statistics really relate directly to our work as a community law office. So the client advocates and social workers are really specialists with very much technical backgrounds and educational training, and they're uniquely qualified to handle these specific needs because they really have an acute informal relationship with third-party service providers and other agencies, both internal and external of the city, that others just do not have. And so that gives our office a distinct advantage when we're talking about placement and overall service delivery. And so quite frankly, that's why I think we have, we were able to have 25 emergency housing placements and three permanent housing placements in the past three months. And really, those are impressive statistics when you compare it to most demographically similar jurisdictions. And so as an office, we're also very much appreciative of the support of this council and this administration in allowing us really the opportunity to provide these types of services because that's somewhat unusual for a public defender office to be able to do those things. But as you can see here, the impact that it does have. If we can move to slide five, please. At the last Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee where our department presented, we showed a video of some of the work that we do. Half of that video highlighted our department's first annual Thanksgiving street outreach. And so while we do actually have a video from this past second annual Thanksgiving event, it's not fully edited as yet, so right now these pictures will have to do. And so what you see here is for our second annual Thanksgiving event this past November, we increased the number of participants that we served and the number of vendors who generously gave some critical supplies is seen on the photo on the top right, and the number of volunteers who assisted us in the efforts to support working to establish that trust that's necessary to effectively engage individuals that are experiencing homelessness. And what that ultimately does is assist us in really changing their circumstances, which actually in turn strengthens our local communities. If we can move to the next slide, slide six. These sort of engagement methods really are meeting individuals where they are. So that's a statistically proven more favorable in reducing jail populations and substantially and significantly more cost-effective than arrests for quality-of-life crimes. So the photo you see here on slide six is actually some of the volunteers serving some of those 300 hot meals that we were able to produce. If we could go to slide seven. So community engagement is a constant and consistent duty of our office. It accompanies the work that we do daily. And as part of this new year, we've developed three distinct new projects that will lead some of those efforts. If we can go to slide eight. Our first project is going to be an expansion of our frequent radio conversations that we have with the general public. And so within the next 30 days, what we anticipate is that we'll begin serving as a regular guest on a popular community podcast to directly engage citizens who have legal questions and also really utilize that format to try to mitigate, minimize some of the negative encounters that happen with law enforcement and alternatively act as really a referral source for some of the city services that are offered or those that are offered by community service providers as well. We could move to slide nine. Some of the most frequent cited offenses in the municipal court are those, and also those that we are appointed to most frequently, tend to surround driver's license suspensions and various issues related to code enforcement violations. And in most instances, these violations occur really because of a lack of knowledge or a lack of resources. And so what we're going to do is adopt the program to collaborate with the NPU's, those neighborhood planning units, to open our driver's license restoration program, which you see the acronym DLRP, to directly get right to the residents. So, you know, understanding that the rules and requirements to get a license reinstated can sometimes be very frustrating and engaging our staff should proactively, we believe, decrease those violations and some of the heavy costs that are really associated with receiving those citations. So likewise, many code enforcement citations are usually knowledge-based as well. So that messaging, to kind of know what the correct thing to do, is sometimes a little easier to hear when it's coming from attorneys from the defense side rather than hearing those things from either law enforcement or prosecution. And so what we also see from a community law office lens, if you will, is that we also have an opportunity to engage with community members who often have legal questions around and how to retain their properties, particularly if there are probate or title issues that have not been addressed. And so we can utilize those conversations that typically happen in the neighborhood planning units, wherein a 10-minute conversation can usually help someone recognize at least the options that they do have regarding retaining ownership of their home rather than hearing from someone who may have ulterior motive or may not be acting in an individual's best interest. And so since the NPU's are already acting as a community resource, we believe this is a natural place for us to roll out this educational campaign. If we can go to slide 10, please. So for the past couple of years, we've had an informal partnership with Koch Industries where they've been an employer resource for job placement to many of our clients. In fact, I think in the past two years, calendar years, we've placed about 30 individuals with some of their vendor partners, and it's been an extremely successful placement program. But again, it's been informal. So collectively, Koch approached us and we decided collectively that what we'd like to do is increase those numbers as best we could and include more of their local subsidiaries and vendor partners so we can essentially start looking to replicate our successes as much as we can and strengthen those numbers from 30 and hopefully get a 10 multiple this time next year. And so the intention will really be to continue to match job opportunities with a person's existing strengths and skills and really provide whatever additional training may be necessary to support a career path and not just an entry-level job because that's exactly what we have been doing with some of their vendor partners. If we can move to slide 11. I would just like to say thanks for allowing me an opportunity to speak today, and I'm happy at this time to answer any questions you may have or to clarify anything from our presentation today.
All right. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Day? Mr. Day, I do have a question. And I know you're a public defender. Typically, when you're interacting with people, it is through them coming through the court system. But as we talk about code enforcement and property retention, one of the things that I'm running into in my neighborhood is with slum landlords who have their folks living in deplorable conditions. And they'll call me as a council member and say, council member, you know, the trash hadn't been picked up in the mall, typically it's multifamily development, where you have children living in there, you know, sometimes the heat is not even on in the multifamily development. And people are so poor, they're just living in these conditions and don't have an opportunity to go anywhere else. But your department, I mean, as a public defender, I can't refer them off to you. Is that correct?
Well, you can't. And what I like to say oftentimes is, we don't mind taking those calls because we get those calls a lot of times when sometimes people just don't know, you know, maybe who the appropriate department or resource to call is. And sometimes, once we've sort of had that initial conversation, we're able to kind of focus them in the right direction, be it a referral to, sometimes the appropriate mechanism is the solicitor's office and it may be sometimes a service provider in the community. Like I think about Atlanta Volunteer Lord of the Foundation, we work with them very closely on some of these issues. But oftentimes, when we get those calls, we don't mind getting them, and we would actually encourage you to refer those calls to us because it's a little bit easier for us to kind of navigate it and keep people from really, you know, more or less getting a runaround of having to go to five different places before they get an answer to their question. And so sometimes it's something that we can, just based on a conversation, help somebody, you know, find a solution to the problem. Other times, we don't necessarily mind making that call if it is to a landlord to sort of say, hey, listen, you know, we understand these are some of the things that are taking place, and here are some of the things that could happen if they are not, you know, to try to, I guess, act as a mediator. I mean, we've been successful in that in the past. So I like to think of us as public defenders that's serving the public. And so even if that is really on a proactive measure, if that decreases the number of cases that have to cycle through the court, then all the better. So to answer your question, certainly we don't mind getting those calls, and I would encourage you to refer those to our office because we have literally people who specialize in those types of, I mean, they're really specialists in those types of situations, those type of legal issues.
Oh, good, because I have one right now with somebody. And, you know, I didn't think about referring to you until you was having this presentation. I'm like, typically I'm thinking about you all when you're only going through the court system, so I wouldn't think about referring to you as a public defender. But thank you. I may be calling on you.
We're happy to help.
All right. Any other questions for my colleagues? Thank you so much, Mr. Day, for being divorced today. We look forward to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
All right. Next, we have Solicitor's Office, City Solicitor Rain Carter. Mr. Carter, are you there?
Yes.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. I am Raines Carter, City Solicitor, and I am happy to be able to give you an update on our quarterly activities. I'll also be joined today by Deputy Solicitor Erica Smith, and she will give you an update on our code enforcement and community activities. Let's go to slide two. Of course, our daily activities involve the prosecution of cases in our court system. Our courts opened their doors again on October 26, and we have been conducting calendars on a daily basis, in addition to continuing bond calendars on the weekends. And we have a particular collaborative that we are very proud of, that we've been working on, with the Atlanta Police Department and our other law enforcement agencies, and that is our collaboration in the police zones. We are continuing to make strides with having our attorneys and support staff in all six of our Atlanta Police Department zones by being there to assist with training and supporting APD in their charging decisions. More recently, during this particular quarter, we have also been able to expand our services to special operations with Atlanta Police, and we're finding out just how busy Atlanta Police continues to be. And I want to take a moment to just express my gratitude to Chief Bryant and his staff for opening their doors to us. These training opportunities are very critical in terms of keeping our city safe. It also has given us an opportunity to be a part of the expansion that's taking place with PADD, the Pre-Arest Diversion, and I understand that there's some modifications that are going on with pre-arrest diversion as it expands into all of the police zones throughout the city. So we're happy to be able to be a part of the team effort to make sure that we educate public, to provide opportunities for people to find another path than by just coming through the court system. We're happy to be able to talk to officers about particular areas of the law that they may need some updates on, so our attorneys are there on a daily basis to assist with those matters. Let's now move to slide three. Slide three, of course, gives our quarterly update on other activities that we're involved in. There've been over 800 arrest cases that we have handled, that have resulted in over 700 bond hearings. Because of COVID-19 issues, of course, there continue to be resets in terms of cases for final disposition. However, we have been able to handle some matters. We've been able to upgrade and bond over charges when we find that there is evidence of more serious activity, and of course, we have been able to dismiss cases when there's a lack of evidence. We're also happy to continue our efforts with record restriction. Last reporting period, our record restrictions were at about eight or nine. We've just about doubled those through this period from October to December to about 20 record restrictions, and we want to continue to work with all agencies to encourage people to take advantage of our record restriction laws here in Georgia. Also, we continue with our diversion and non-traditional prosecution programs. We have been able, during this period, to review more than 13,000 cases that have come in, and we are providing out opportunities to the public to participate in pretrial diversion, be it a traffic violation or a criminal violation, to allow people to resolve their cases without having to appear in court, and to also have people avail themselves of opportunities for record restrictions and other opportunities to keep their life going. I will continue to be a part of this process to answer questions at the end, but I would now like to turn it over to Deputy Solicitor Erica Smith, so that she can give you updates on what we've been doing in the community.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. I'm Erica Smith, Deputy Solicitor. This is slide number four. I'm here to talk about what we are doing in the community as well as within code enforcement. We have been working together for One Atlanta along with other city departments. If we could advance to slide number five. Our code enforcement team continues on a weekly basis to assist code enforcement details as well as assisting our city departments. We have redeployed several of our code enforcement officers to work with our city departments. In the month of October, we have completed over 238 property inspections. In the month of November, we completed over 319 property inspections. And in the month of December, there were over 512 property inspections. These inspections included posting stop work orders, as well as giving out notices, and re-inspections to make sure that no work was being performed under those stop work notices, as well as issuing citations. If we could advance to slide number six, please. The Solicitor's Office, even though we're still in COVID in our pandemic, we were able to continue our college tours. The college tour from the Solicitor's Office is designed to introduce and educate college students about the Office of the City Solicitor, our office programs, as well as the laws of Georgia, and what we're doing in our office. Our recent partnerships include working with Morehouse Public, Spelman College, Georgia State University, Atlanta Metropolitan College, and Clark Atlanta University. If we could advance to the next slide, slide number seven, please. During this quarter, we partnered with Georgia State Police, who talked to me Tuesday, and we care Wednesday series, where we presented information about our various programs in the Office of the City Solicitor via Facebook and Instagram. Some of the topics included an overview of the Solicitor's Office, the role of Atlanta victim assistance, pretrial intervention and other diversion programs that we offer, cybernet and cyber bullying, and our record restriction programs. If we can advance to the next slide, please. Our Office continues to provide community outreach in the midst of the COVID pandemic by participating in those drives that aid constituents who are experiencing food insecurity. We have partnered in this quarter with District Eight Councilmember Andrea Boone, Jackson Memorial Baptist Church, the Atlanta Community Food Bank, Maximum Impact, Kroger, and Wayfill Foods. We successfully assisted in serving over 3,500 families in the city of Atlanta by providing fresh produce, milk, water, and poultry, and many of the poultry items were holiday and Thanksgiving turkey. We would especially like to thank our partners and the administration, as well as our various city departments, who participated in working together with not only us, but our community members, of bringing us all together as One Atlanta. Next slide, please. Slide number 10, please. A second thanks to our Public Safety Department, Atlanta Police Department, Atlanta Fire and Rescue, and our Department of Corrections, for not only making our city safer, but always answering the call when we called them to help us within our food drive and other community outreach programs that we have. Thank you. At this time, are there any questions from Mr. Carter or myself?
Any questions for my colleagues? Okay. They all look quiet today. Thank you so much, Mr. Carter. Yes, this is Councilmember Boone. I don't have a question, but I do want to thank Mr. Carter, Ms. Smith, and their entire team for continuing to fight for blight, going on the tours, and looking into Baker Ferry, Del Mar Lane, Atkins Road, Marlon's Park, going through that whole area over the past two weeks to ensure that those residents are being served, and also for participating and also getting sponsors during the pandemic for our seniors at the Jackson Memorial Baptist Church and also at the CC Mark Recreation Center. So on behalf of those NPU's, again, thank you all for responding to those neighbors that are having those issues over on Del Mar Lane. Thank you again. Thank you, Ms. Boone. Thank you, Ms. Boone. We appreciate your work, and again, I want to thank Solicitor Carter and Ms. Smith. You all do great work across the city, and we appreciate everything that you do. I look forward to working with you this year, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to, we're now at a further consent agenda, and so we have claims with favorable and unfavorable recommendations. Our first set of claims is one through three, and these are favorable. These are resolutions. Can I entertain a motion to accept the favorable claims, one through three? Is there a second?
Second, Faroki.
That's second by Mr. Faroki. We're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo. One moment, Madam Chair. The vote is open. Ms. Winslow, how do you vote? Ms. Winslow? Mr. Barnes, how do you vote?
I cast my vote on the machine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barnes. Thank you. So the votes close, Madam Chair, that's six days, zero days. I didn't say favorable. This is Ms. Winslow, I'm in favor. We'll count to that vote, Madam Chair. Thank you. So that will be seven yeas. All right. We'll now move to claims with unfavorable recommendations, and those are numbers four through 58. Can I entertain a motion to accept those recommendations?
Salute Hills.
Is there a second?
Second, Faroki. You can let Ms. Winslow do it, I can vote online.
Ms. Winslow, can you go ahead, is she second?
Yes. Winslow, second.
Thank you. The vote is open, Madam Chair. It was close, seven yeas, zero days, if item is a business break. All right, thank you so much. We're now from item J, ordinance for second read. The first one is item number one. Can you sound that, Ms. Lindo?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's ordinance is 21000028. It's an ordinance by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the mayor a designate in accordance with Section 2-1163C, Article 10, Petronin and Real Estate Code, to ratify contact number FT8729, annual maintenance with WestNet Inc. and services provided during renewal number one from January 31, 2018 through January 30, 2019, and renewal number two from January 31, 2019 through January 30, 2020, and to exercise renewal number three for a term of one year to become retroactively effective January 31, 2020 through January 30, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $33,519.14. On behalf of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, for the purpose of providing maintenance, the city's fire station alerting systems, all other costs we pay, some accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you. Is there anyone from, I guess, the fire department or from the mayor's office to speak on this? I have a question. Is anyone here to speak on this, Ms. Lindo? I believe Chief Smith was going to be available, Madam Chair, and we'll make sure he's still on the line.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Chief Smith here from Atlanta Fire.
Okay, so I see here where it said that apparently there was some kind of snafu, but we didn't renew the first one in 2018 through 2020, all the way up to where we are now. Is that correct? What's happened with that?
Yes, ma'am. There was some confusion in the language of the contract, where the keepers of the contract interpreted it as being a three-year contract with one-year renewables. However, it was a one-year contract with three one-year renewables.
So you only caught it recently, as I'll get ready to look at the last country, the last portion of it, so you're something with a three-year contract?
Yes, ma'am. And so we're in the process now of replacing the equipment, and WestNet provides the maintenance, and they continue to provide that maintenance for the equipment. And so it was caught when we were trying to move to the new CAD system as well as replace the alerting systems and all of the fire stations.
Okay. All right. I just want to get clarity on what happened. We have a question from Mr. Hillis.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So I see that this contract doesn't end, even the renewal ends January 30 of this year, so once this expires, is all the work done, or there needs to be another contract that's coming down the pipe?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Hillis, there will be another contract. The payment that we will be making for this year covers this calendar year, and so we will be working towards putting another contract or a new contract in place for the newer equipment moving forward.
Thank you for that, and also just wanted to say congratulations on your appointment as Fire Chief. Very glad to have you in our position, and you'll be a good caregiver.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it. Looking forward to leading Atlanta Fire Rescue into its future.
Thank you, Mr. Hillis. And yes, Chief, you moved to Fire Department. I'm sorry, I was a little missing, I sent some graduation also. I haven't had a chance to have a one-on-one with you, but congratulations. Just for the public and everybody, just tell us a little bit about who you are and how long you've been with us for this city.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you in advance for your support, and thank you for the acknowledgement. It will become official upon the well-deserved retirement of Chief Slaughter, so I was looking forward to making more formalized conversation with this group at the next meeting. He will be retiring February 17. Just to give you a little insight, I am with Atlanta Fire Rescue. I've been there for 28 years now. I've led all three major divisions of labor, including now serving as Technical Services Deputy Chief, no stranger to this committee, because I am the legislative liaison for the department currently. I am from the city of Atlanta, a native. I currently live in the city of Atlanta, and I look forward to leading us into our future.
Well, I'm excited. Again, all you, I just want to say thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. I really appreciate it.
Any other questions in terms of this legislation? If not, is there a recommendation to approve, motion to approve?
Motion to approve, hello.
Ms. Winslow, do you want to second that?
Yes, Winslow, second. Thank you.
All right, we're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo. One moment, Madam Chair. The vote is open. The vote is closed, seven yeas, zero days, if item is favorable. Madam Chair, we will also need to take a separate vote to refer this to FEC to cover any outstanding invoices that may be there? All right. So we'll entertain a motion to refer this all All right. So we'll entertain a motion to refer this all to FEC.
So moved Hillis.
Winslow, second.
Okay. Thank you. We're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo. Vote is open, Madam Chair. The vote is closed, seven yeas, there are days. This item is amended to FEC. All right. We're now at item number two, twenty-one dash oh dash zero zero five nine. Can you sound that, Ms. Lindo? Yes, Madam Chair. That's twenty-one oh zero zero five nine. It's an ordinance by Councilmember Martha Collier-Overstreet to amend Chapter ten, Alcoholics Privacy, Article two, Division two, subdivision three, Section ten dash one oh six of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, so as to clarify the requirements for reporting sales at annual renewal and to amend Chapter ten, Article two, Division two, subdivision, subdivision three, Section ten dash one oh nine point one of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, so as to amend demanded for penalties for due cause findings by the mayor with respect to existing licenses and for other purposes. Thank you. I see Mr. Hillis already has a question. I was going to ask one too, but I'm going to let you go, Mr. Hillis. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairwoman Shepard. This is some much-needed legislation. I just want to add some teeth to our enforcement of these licenses, which we just spoke about earlier in the meeting, what's with the clubs and institutions posing as restaurants that are actually nightclubs, increase those penalties and also the reporting requirements. So I would actually like to make an amendment to add my name to this legislation and would encourage others to do so. This is a much-needed, much-needed change.
Thank you. Please, Ms. Lindo, we'll come up with an amendment. I see Mr. Faroki also wants to speak. Mr. Faroki?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just a request to add my name to this legislation as well.
Okay. Well, we're going to have a lineup. All right. So add my name. I think Mr. Bond just said add his name. Is there anyone else?
The councilmember Winslow would like her name added as well.
Okay. Anyone else? So just for the public in terms of this, Ms. Roberts or someone from Long Island, maybe Ms. Roberts can kind of go over it so people can really clearly understand what the legislation is. I'm excited.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Shepard, Chair Shepard and the rest of the committee. This is Amber Robinson. Sure, just briefly. What this particular legislation does is requires that when restaurants who are granted certain exemptions from the alcohol distance requirement due to the fact that they are restaurants, are submitting their renewal applications, this will require them to submit along with them certified statements from a certified public accountant concerning the percentage of revenue they have received during the preceding year from the sale of prepared meals of food versus alcohol because, of course, it is the percentage of revenue received from prepared meals of food versus alcohol that determines whether an entity is, in fact, a restaurant or, more properly, a nightclub or a bar. So this kind of puts some more teeth surrounding that. We had previously, it will currently, if this legislation doesn't pass, restaurants are required to provide some level of statement as to the earnings and the revenue. However, this will require that it be presented by a certified accountant. Additionally, the penalties that are required for problems of due cause are being strengthened pursuant to this legislation in a way that will permit the revocation of a license on the first offense if, in fact, the, you know, board determines that the offense is significant and severe enough to warrant that. So in doing so, it will allow for greater accountability concerning alcohol licensee behavior.
Thank you. And that also includes, Ms. Roberts, when we say restaurant, sports bars also because I have a couple of sports bars in my community. And I have to hate to say that, but they do operate like a club. So that's also.
That is absolutely correct. Most sports bars do travel under a restaurant license, which is what permits them to be open on Sundays rather than a usual bar or nightclub. So this will be something that will have a special level of accountability on sports bars.
So again, when I'm looking at that, if I have a sports bar, a sports bar in terms of when they even give applications, they're supposed to be open at a certain time of the day. Is that correct? And so, but if you're a club, you're not allowed to be open on a Sunday. Is that correct? If you're a club? What's the difference between both?
I'm sorry. I totally pressed mute. So yeah, a sports bar or a restaurant is able to be open on Sunday pursuant to state law. And that's because they serve a certain percentage, is greater than fifty percent of their revenue is derived from the sale of unprepared meals. And that's the state law. Otherwise, you are not permitted to be open on Sundays if you do not sell that much food. So a nightclub or a non-sports bar, just a regular bar, would be prohibited from being open on Sunday pursuant to state law because they collect too much revenue from the sale of alcohol. And they're not required to sell food whatsoever, actually. So in, that is the distinction about what days the differing types of establishment are able to be open.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, can I entertain a motion? Is there a motion already out there? No, Madam Chair. We do need a motion to amend to add Hillis, Faroki, Bond, Shepard and Winslow. That's right. I'm sorry. Motion to amend. Yeah. All right. We're ready for the vote. One moment. The vote is open, Madam Chair. Okay. I had to have Ms. mover. I don't think I was the mover. Maybe I was. Anyway, that's fine. And Ms. Winslow, how do you vote?
In favor.
All right. The vote is closed, seven yeas, there are days. This item is amended. So now I entertain a motion to approve as amended?
Move approval as amended, Winslow.
Second, Hillis.
Okay. Thank you. We're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo. One moment. The vote is open, Madam Chair. The vote is closed, seven yeas, there are days. This item is favorable as amended. All right. Thank you. We're now at under resolution, item number three. Ms. Lindo, can you sound that legislation, that resolution, please? Yes, Madam Chair. That's Resolution twenty-one R thirty thirty-eight. It's a resolution by Councilmember Howard Shuff to accept an offer to establish a partnership with the Center for Disease Control, Division of Violence Prevention, to utilize its expertise and scientific approach as additional resource to identify the cause and stem the rise of violent crime in this city and for other purposes.
Motion approved, Hillis.
I'm sorry, Hillis. Okay, I do have a question that we need to get clarity on. Now, who, what partnership, Mr. Shuff references a partnership with the CDC? So at some point, we got to figure out how do we make this happen with CDC? Does he already know someone or do we going to have to reach out? Or how is the office to establish a partnership with CDC? But can somebody talk about that? Mr., I don't know, how do we propose to do that? And I didn't get a chance to capture that before the meeting today. Okay. I'm just going to put that out there as a question. We'll have to come back and see if that happens. But we did need to figure out how we're going to make that happen. So Ms. Lindo, can you and I talk to Mr. Shuff and kind of figure out how we're going to make that happen? But there is a motion. Yes, Madam Chair. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Winslow, second.
Take, take leader.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. We're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo. The vote is open, Madam Chair. The vote is closed, seven yeas, there are days. This item is favorable. All right. We'll now move on to item number four. Can you sound that, Ms. Lindo? Yes, Madam Chair. That's Resolution twenty-one R thirty thirty-nine. It's a resolution by Councilmember Howard Shuff requesting that the chief judge of the Cal County Superior Court and the chief judge of the Fulton County Superior Court share information with the City of Atlanta and how they have adapted court functions to resume operations with the COVID-nineteen challenges and for other purposes. Okay. So Ms. Lindo and I talked about it earlier. So we're going to reach out to the court system for both of these chief judges and ask them to submit to us a report on this. Is that correct what we said we're going to do, Ms. Lindo? How we're going to do it? Correct, Madam Chair. So we will bring that report back to this committee. So there's a mo, is there a motion to approve? I'll make the motion.
Okay, or I can.
Ms. Smith, you can second.
Yes. Well, Winslow, second.
Okay. Winslow, go ahead. Ms. Smith, you make the motion. Ms. Winslow can second. Thank you.
I just seconded it, Madam Chair. Winslow, second.
We're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo. One moment, Madam Chair. The vote is open? Do you want to please vote? The vote is closed, seven yeas, there are days. This item is favorable. All right. Ms. Lindo, we're now at number five. Would you sound that, please? Yes, Madam Chair. This is Resolution twenty-one R thirty forty. It's a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to establish the City of Atlanta Alcohol Technical Advisory Group for the purpose of making recommendations to implement the ATAC two report and additional recommendations for changes to the City of Atlanta's alcohol beverage licensing process and the enforcement of laws pertaining to the licensing, sale and regulation of alcohol beverages in the City of Atlanta as a result of its review for ATAC three to provide recommendations to the mayor and the city council within six months of its first meeting and for other purposes. And I believe, Madam Chair, we do have a substitute. And that adds where it says the mayor and the city council shall within six months of its first meeting, they shall reconvene on a bimonthly basis to discuss the status of recommendation progress for a total of twelve months following the delivery of the recommendations and for other purposes. And that is a substitute. Okay. Mr. Bond, do you want to speak?
Yes, I'd like to move the substitute forward. This was drafted in cooperation with members of the broader community and clear who have communicated with us their feelings about our alcohol code and wanting some action taken on it. So this is a collaborative effort that we're hoping to move forward. And I was moved, I guess, to the substitute before, move that to bring it forward.
Second, Hillis.
Okay.
So the motion is to bring the substitute forth, Ms. Lindo. One moment. The vote is open, Madam Chair. Thank you. Ms. Lindo, I'm not sorry, Ms. Winslow, Winslow, how do you vote?
Favor.
Okay, thank you. Everyone sees both of them. Closed, seven yeas, there are days. This item is a substitute. I do have a question, Mr. Bond, before we vote on this. So you did, this is your, will be your ATAC three? So the last time we did the ATAC two, it took two years for us to get that report back. And I notice in this one, you're going to, you're looking at twelve months for to go through a process. And it's a lot of folks on here. And what, what, what filed, Mr. Bond, what filed the claim of the recommendations out of ATAC two? Did these change in the legislation or anything? What happened with that?
Yes, the report was forwarded to the mayor and council at the time. About thirteen, thirty-five percent of the recommendations were acted upon. But as other priorities, as we all know, come up on the city council, some of the recommendations come fell to the wayside. What this group will do is not seek to read, invent, or fill, to go through that report and develop legislation or policies that are warranted.
So will we pull information from your previous report?
Yes. Add that research. So we wouldn't be going through an extended process of public community input since the report is already completed. This is a review to see what remains of those recommendations that may still be relevant for action in the present time.
Okay. I would just ask a couple of questions. Ms. Smith, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I do. Councilmember Bond, I want to, I know there's the thing about getting too many cooks in the kitchen, but you only want us to have one member appointed by like one, two, three, four, and the at-large. And that's going to be really hard because I'm sitting here, I can think right now just of two people from District one, that they're both equally wonderful. And so I'm thinking we need, we may need, because I don't want to, I don't know, we're going to argue. I feel like we're going to all want to have someone on this because alcohol is an issue in all of our communities. So I'm wondering if we can do more than just one member between the groups.
I'm not opposed at all, Ms. Smith.
Oh, okay, okay. So could we have, well, I may be overreaching, but can we have two people per council district?
I'm not opposed to that at all. I think that that's, that would be fine. But again, like I said, this is just a review of work that has already been completed and the existing code. So they're going to make recommendations based on the existing report. I don't have any apprehension about what you're suggesting.
Okay. Joyce, let me get your opinion on this. So I may want to go ahead and amend the appointment. What does your mind say? Do you, should I, especially if we're just reviewing old, but, you know, to get some, I like his idea of doing that. Gets fresh eyes on it. And, so anyway, I just, what do you think about having two people per district?
Well, I don't know if you all remember, but that was a long task force for two years. And I'm not opposing anything, Mr. Bond, you're saying. But now we're talking about doing something with seventeen members for one year. Sometimes when you have a huge amount of people on it, you can't get any work done. People, you know, because here we are, we have the mayor, appointee from the mayor, and then you have the president of council.
Uh-huh.
You got somebody from the Public Safety Committee. You got somebody from the Public Safety Committee.
Uh-huh.
And you have and you have two council members, uh two council appointed by the full council.
Right.
Then and then you've got uh the progress in terms of the council members. That's a lot of citizens that we can appoint. And then you got and then you got A-PAS, the Atlanta Chamber of Commerce. I mean, you're gonna have a huge amount of citizens on there already, Carla. Do you really think we need to add more?
Well, okay, can I just say that I would like, I'd like to amend it to have two members from District One?
Uh, okay.
Also amendment?
Ms. Smith, why don't we do this? Why don't we just provide them the option to add some ad hoc members to their committee upon the recommendation of council? So if there are, after these appointments have been made, if there's still a few people who just need to be on here, uh we can just ask them to appoint or rather have the city council appoint some ad hoc members uh or something like that. You know, because I guess, you know, I don't envision that, you know, we're not gonna be engaged in the same process of having uh, you know, an extended amount of public outreach and and public hearings, though I'm sure we'll but it won't be as involved as it was uh for ATAC two. But what do you just think about giving them the ability or having the city council reserve the ability of members as is necessary?
Oh, I love that. Okay, so I'm gonna make a friendly amendment, if you'll accept it, to for the city council to add ad hoc members as necessary. And I've already, y'all, I just want y'all to know, I have two people in mind. I'm sure they're both gonna jump at it. As a matter of fact, I just texted one and she's ready. So um, so um, Ms. Lindo, can I just make that a friendly amendment and you add it in?
I guess, Madam, um, yes, Councilmember Smith.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Bond, and thank you, Chairperson Shepherd.
All right. Let me hear from Mr. Farroki, too. I just wanna make sure we're, he's not gonna add anything else we're doing amendments. But anyway, let me just hear from Mr. Mr. Farroki. Did you have your
Uh, yeah, I I I'll be brief. I I um, I think we're striking the right balance here. I just wanted to commend the uh the individuals and neighborhoods that made up clear and took the time to write the letter with a a lot of very well-thought-out uh proposals um that were birthed from a lot of hard experience. And so I'd uh thank Councilmember Bond for firing up ATAC again and for making it more inclusive so that a lot of these voices from across the city can have a seat at the table and look forward to the work uh that everyone does. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, Ms. Lindo, can we capture Ms. Smith's amendment and then we'll try to go ahead and move the paper forward?
Yes, Madam Chair. I understand that Ms. Smith is saying that the 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 members of the city council may add ad ad hoc members as necessary. And um perhaps we can add that to um Section Ten where it says the members of ATAC three are hereby authorized to appoint ex officio non-voting members to the um advisory group via majority of votes. Do you want or do you want to add a new section?
Let me ask, Mr. Bond, is ad hoc members, does that mean that they don't get to vote?
Right, they don't get, they don't get to vote, but do get if they're ad hoc.
Say that again.
I said, if you're an ad hoc member, you get to participate, but you barely have a vote.
I don't like.
But that's just to keep it from being, as Ms. Shepherd mentioned, you know, kind of too unwieldy.
I know. I realize that as I'm asking it. I, you know, and I'm being very selfish here. I'm trying to get two neighborhood people from District One that I think would be superb on this committee. And I'm trying to figure out, because I gotta wrangle with this two, three, four, and you to try to get one of my people on there. And then um I'm about to try to figure out how I can get the other one on after I've wrangled with all of you.
Okay, and y'all remember too, let me, while y'all having this discussion together, think about a quorum, too. So you already got seventeen members of seventeen. We're making this real big. I don't know how we're gonna constitute this quorum. Let's hope it's something that everybody's gonna continue to come to uh and that we can get, that we can actually become seventeen is a lot. So I'm just letting y'all know. And the more people you have, the more, the bigger it is. Sometimes it's hard to come to a conclusion or decision with all these people. I just want y'all to think about that. And who who's gonna facilitate, how do we facilitate that before, Mr. Bond? How was it facilitated?
Well, we did have ad hoc members uh on the committee and the the only vote that they took was the just the final vote of support. Well, they took two votes. One on the individual policy recommendations, and it was almost sixty, I I believe. And then uh they voted finally on the report. All the rest was just debate and discussion. So there there's not gonna be a lot of, you know, voting where necessarily have uh their their vote heard. And of course, ultimately, it'd be up to the mayor and council, you know, to act on any or all of these recommendations.
So I I really would, I like to go back, I guess, in a long time, I'd like to look at the report. And then I would love to see how many of those recommendations, the sixteen you said, that we actually implemented. I would love to look at, let's let's look at all of that, too, because that's not the thing we need to
That of the total acted upon, because they were hot issues at the time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
I think the ad hoc kind of gets us where where we'd like to be, because it's important, it it's it's not so important, I don't think, for the voting, because I think responsible members of the committee can handle the voting. It's just making sure people have a seat at the table and a part of being a active part of the discussion. I think that would probably be more important.
And let me just say, I just I got a text from the Law Department that says that they don't allow us to um the Open Records Act doesn't allow meetings to convene without a quorum. But you're gonna have to have a quorum regardless of whether you say they're taking a vote or not. Uh, and I know up under the City of Atlanta, they look at the Open Records Act, anything we do up under that, so we will have to have a quorum.
Right. And well, you know, but the these committees and commissions, they can set their own rules for a quorum in their bylaws of operating.
I think the Law Department, that's that's the state legislation. The reason I know we're going through that with Keep Atlanta Beautiful right now. So, yeah, but we we're gonna have to actually get that down. I just want y'all to think about all of that. I I'm, we get into the weeds now, so I'm I'm all but I just don't want us to be adding too much stuff and then we can't meet the requirements of it, that's all. And sometime, again, when you have too many folks in the kitchen, you can't get no cooking done, that's all.
I know, I, that's what I said. Okay, you know what? I'm gonna be happy that I can work really hard to get my two people on there, so I'm gonna stop talking and let Ms. Ms. Lindo already read my amendment, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
What was that amendment again? I can't remember.
Um, um, yes, Madam Chair. This will be added to Section Ten where it says the members of ATAC three are hereby authorized to appoint ex officio non-voting members to the advisory group via majority vote of those seated members. And the city council members may add ad hoc members as necessary.
Okay. All right, so that's what we are with that. So uh I think we have a motion and a second. We're ready for the vote.
And thank y'all.
One moment, the vote is open. On the amendment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Winslow, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
The vote is closed, seven years zero days, that item has been amended.
All right.
All right, we now we need a motion to
Yes, a motion, I'm sorry, motion to accept as amended.
On substitute as amended.
On substitute as amended. That was Mr. Bond. Ms. Winslow, would you second, please?
I will second, yes.
Thank you. We're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo.
One moment. The vote is open, Madam Chair. Please go. Okay, the vote's closed. That um that that seven yay zero days, that item is favorable on substitute as amended.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Right now, item number six. Ms. Lindo, could you sound that, please?
Yes, that's Resolution Twenty One R thirty forty-one. It's a resolution by Councilmember Marcie Colley Aldrich authorizing the Department of Aviation and the Atlanta Fire Rescue to execute a memorandum of understanding to allow the Atlanta Fire and Rescue Department to rent their facility at fifty-one fifty-five Clipper Drive in College Park, Georgia, for a term of five years and for other purposes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, um, is this my paper?
No, this is the, oh, I'm sorry, not Ms. Ms. Smith. It was Mr. Smith, I'm sorry, Chief Smith.
Oh, oh, you know, you know, I was gonna tell him, we are related through marriage, because I'm married into the Smith family. I'm sorry. But I do, but I love his name.
Y'all cousins somewhere distant cousins.
There's a lot of us Smiths in the world.
Chief Smith from the Fire Department there, Detective Chief Smith. Okay, Mr. Selden, also, maybe Mr. Selden can speak to it if if he can't. Who can speak to this paper?
One moment, Madam Chair, I believe, regarding
Madam Chair, uh Chief Smith, I'm still here.
Okay. So apparently, this paper is that we found a temporary space for to put our fire department in because we didn't have a training facility. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is not in Cleveland, Atlanta's in College Park, is that correct?
I beg pardon, I could not hear you.
Is it in the city or is it in College Park?
This uh location is located in College Park, but the building is owned by uh Department of Aviation.
Okay. Oh, it's owned by the Department of Aviation, ah, so it's owned by the
Yes, ma'am.
The par- okay, so that was why I was trying to understand why the Department of Aviation was involved.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this is a resolution that we would take that building up here. Is it empty right now or is that what's happening?
Yes, ma'am, it is empty. Uh, as many of you know, our training facility uh was closed uh earlier pre-COVID. And so this is a measure by Atlanta Fire Rescue in collaboration with the airport to utilize this facility temporarily until we can move forward with the consolidated training center for the City of Atlanta.
Okay. All right.
This is John Selden. I've I've been unmuted, too, if you have any questions for us. Yes, the building's been vacant for years.
Okay. And, okay, it's in College Park. I would like to go out there and check it out, see where it is. Uh, but uh and I understand the administration is saying that there's a potential we may still hopefully, if we get the other training facilities built, we won't have to be, they won't have to, I said for three years, is that correct? Or five years? Chairman, for five years?
Yes, ma'am, it is a five year, yes, ma'am, it is a five-year deal.
Let's hope y'all not gonna be out there for five years. Okay. Any questions from any of my colleagues? Is that Mr. Bond? You have a question?
Uh, no, ma'am. Sorry, my button stopped, that's all.
Okay. All right. All right. We'll make a motion to approve. I'll make the motion. There is second. I do want our fire department to get back somewhere they can actually do their work and we can start hiring to a fire department folks again. It makes me feel better than the fact that this this is a building owned by the Aviation Department of the City. When I have a lot, okay. Winslow, second?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, we're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo.
The vote is open, Madam Chair. Seven yay zero days, this item is favorable. Madam Chair, we will also need to take a vote to refer this to the Transportation Committee?
Okay. Motion to uh refer to the Transportation Committee. Is there a second, Ms. Winslow?
Yes, second.
Thank you. We're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo.
The vote is open, Madam Chair. The vote's close, seven years zero days, this item has been referred to the Transportation Committee.
All right, thank you. We're now at item seven and eight on our agenda, and I believe that we can take them as a block. Ms. Lindo, would you sound this, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. These are two settlements, and the first one is Twenty One R thirty-one oh four. It's a resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendants in the case of Nadia Thomas versus Terrence Franklin individually and in his capacity as an employee or agent of the City of Atlanta. Civil file action listed herein in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars and authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement settlement amount and for other purposes. Item number eight, Twenty One R thirty-one oh five, resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendants in the case of Jeremy Wallace versus the City of Atlanta. Civil action listed herein pending in the State Court of Fulton County of Georgia in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars and authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes.
All right. Are there any questions? Uh, can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Bruce, though.
Winslow, second.
All right. Motion approved, we'll tell you to second, Bond. Ms. Winslow, we're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo.
The vote is open, Madam Chair. The vote's close, seven yay zero days, those those items are favorable.
All right. We're now at papers that are held, that are coming off of the hall, items, then items twenty-three and twenty-five. We'll start with twenty-three. Ms. Lindo, can you sound that, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is um ordinance twenty-one oh zero zero twenty. This is ordinance by J.C. Mazatite, Michael Julian Bond, and Doug T. Keller directing the chief financial officer to take what action shall be necessary to ensure that a minimum of thirty-three percent of the net revenue collected and remitted to the City of Atlanta for the result of school zone C camera enforcement up to a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars um up to a maximum of two million five hundred thousand dollars shall be utilized to fund the purchase and maintenance of cameras and license plate readers citywide for the Operation Shield Video Surveillance Program and a minimum of thirty-three percent of the net revenue collected and remitted to the City of Atlanta as a result of the school zone C camera enforcement up to a maximum of two million five hundred thousand dollars shall be utilized to fund the construction or improvement of the City's Public Safety Training Center and for other purposes. And Madam Chair, we do have a substitute uh that before you that um adds language to ensure that the revenue is also used uh to for pedestrian safety.
Okay, let's make, I'll make a motion to bring a substitute forward. Um, Ms. Winslow, could you second that, please?
Yes, second.
All right. Bring a substitute forward. We're ready for the vote.
The vote is open? The vote's close, seven years zero days, the substitute is before you.
And I believe we have the author, Mr. Mazatite, he's with us, and I also know that Ms. Smith had made one of the uh amendments. And so, Mr. Mazatite, would you like to speak on your paper, if you're here?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, and, and thank you to the committee. This is a companion paper, really, it's the one that council passed regarding the, uh, school, uh, speed zone, uh, cameras, and, um, you know, a, a, at least initially, at the beginning, there's likely gonna be some fine money that, um, would be collected with the school's speed zone cameras, we hope that that goes down over time as people learn, um, and abide by the school, uh, speed limits, but initially, there is gonna be some, um, fine money, and so, this paper tries to, um, outline where that money would go, and, again, we don't know how much money, uh, would actually be collected, uh, and it, it would go down over time, but a third of the money would go to, uh, cameras, um, the, the installation and maintenance citywide, and that would be, again, determined by the, the Police Department, um, in cooperation with the Police Foundation, um, a third of it would also go to, uh, the Police Training Center, uh, and/or programs, and then a third, you know, would go to other safety, uh, public safety initiatives, including pedestrian safety, and that's something that, um, Councilmember Smith wanted to be sure was, um, listed here in this paper, and, uh, we had a, a meeting with, um, various members of the administration and, uh, got that included in this substitute, so that's, that's the nature of this paper, and, um, happy to answer any, any questions anybody has.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzacite. Ms. Smith, I see you have your hand raised, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted, Councilmember Mazzacite, thank you so much, keep that with me with, um, like, when we were talking the other day, we had, my team was there, um, and, um, Councilmember Mazzacite, we had the Law Department there, and I had a neighborhood association that was, um, wanting me to, um, make sure that we include pedestrians and, like, uh, helping kids get to school safely, so that is what was put into the substitute, is, um, for us to discuss, uh, uh, pedestrian safety in with the Public Safety Initiative, and that was placed in the paper, and I really appreciate you accepting, um, my amendment, which ended up being a substitute, so, thank you, Councilmember Mazzacite, and if we don't have a motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, there's a motion to approve, uh, Ms. Smith, is there a second?
Winslow, second.
Thank you. I believe we have a motion in a second, we're ready for the vote, Ms. Lindo.
The vote is open, Madam Chair. The votes close, seven yay zero nay, this item is favorable on substitute.
All right, thank you, we're now at item number twenty-five, can you sound that, Ms. Lindo?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's Resolution 21R 3003, it's a resolution by Councilmember Joyce and Shepherd adopting a plan regarding the deployment of City of Atlanta Department of Correction personnel in accordance with the requirements of ordinance number 20O 1260 as amended by ordinance number 20O 1679 and for other purposes. And, Madam Chair, we do have an amendment to this legislation, the amendment attached the, uh, Exhibit A and also inserts the, uh, the total number of, um, Department of Corrections personnel in the second to last, whereas from thirty-five, three hundred fifty-nine as of July 2017 to two hundred as of July 2020.
Okay, all right, um, thank you, so, let's take a motion, I'll make a motion to bring the amendment forward, or is it a substitute?
It's a substitute. An amendment, Madam Chair?
Amendment.
Winslow, second.
Thank you, Ms. Winslow.
The vote is open? The votes close, seven yay zero nay, this item has been amended?
Okay, so, I, I just wanna say before we just say that we're gonna arbitrarily, uh, do this, is that I want, uh, hopefully, will be Mr. Bartlett, Matt, uh, to come forth and just explain to us, we talked about this in our work session, our work session we had last week, but, again, we talked about closing the, uh, jail, but we also had another discussion specifically around the redeployment of employees in the jail and how it's gonna go forth, and so, there, and also, there's a commitment that this is supposed to be completed by February, and so, we are on this course, and so, I'll ask Mr. Bartlett to come forth and just give us a brief overview of what we discussed, and if you don't have any questions, we can do that.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you, and good afternoon to members of the committee, uh, this is Matthew Bartlett with the Mayor's Office. So, what we have before us, as you mentioned, this is the Corrections Pre-Deployment Plan that we did walk through in last week's work session, um, the catalyst for this plan was the budget ordinance through which council requested that a plan be developed and presented for approval, uh, and as you mentioned, Councilmember, the date associated with that requirement, um, is February 1, and so, that is what this plan and this resolution are seeking to fill, fill. In terms of, um, just a high-level overview of what the plan does, um, there's really four things, and those are listed on page nine of the document that is reflected as Exhibit A. Those four things are firstly, to align on the minimum staffing needs at ACDC for the time being, secondly, to identify the actions that get us to that proposed minimum staffing, thirdly, to determine the appropriate departmental alignment for those positions, and fourthly, to anticipate the budget savings associated with the measures contained in the plan, and to lay out some reinvestment options based on those savings. In terms of a summary of what the plan proposes on those four matters, there is a summary slide, which is slide ten of the plan, that addresses at a high level each of those issues, and I will speak to those, uh, in, here in a second. Um, the other point I would just make for the benefit of the committee members, there are additional slides in the presentation that provide additional information on each of these elements. So, Madam Chair, in terms of summarizing what the plan proposes to do, uh, aligning on minimum staffing needs, we have worked with the Corrections Team and built a model from the ground up, uh, reflecting operations at ACDC at the present, and through that effort, we have reached a number of one hundred thirty-eight FTEs. The second question relates to the transition pathway to get to that number, and we are proposing three actions that we think make sense and get us there in an orderly manner. Those three actions relate to the abolishment of a security contract, number one, not backfilling for a number of positions that have become vacant, number two, and redeploying the sworn corrections staff that are assigned at Grady Hospital to the Atlanta Police Department, number three. The third issue the plan addresses relates to the departmental alignment, and in short, we are proposing that the one hundred thirty-eight sworn and civilian positions assigned at ACDC be placed under the renamed Department of Corrections and Community Service to better capture the breadth of activities that the staff is responsible for. And on the final question of budget savings, we think that this plan, uh, yields pure savings of about two-point-three million, as well as an incremental transfer that would accompany the positions for Grady Hospital over to APT. So, that in, in brief, Councilmember, is a quick summary of what the plan proposes. Just to close out with one or two, um, final points, I did just want to state that, um, this is really the first step is to, uh, finalize this plan, which is what the resolution before you is seeking to do, um, the resolution itself would not effectuate the personnel and budget moves that are proposed in the plan, those would come back to council in the form of a personnel paper and the budget paper for approval to implement, um, and those are also laid out as next steps in the final slide contained in the plan. And just in closing, I would like to take a brief moment to thank Chief Mitchell for his support and his team for their support as we have worked together to put this plan in place, and with that, Madam Chair, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Councilmember Winslow, I know I seconded it, but I'm trying to go back over what we talked about last week and what was talked about at the work session in regard to, um, you know, us going back one more time and, um, um, doing a visit at the jail, also, I guess, bringing the chair before, answer some questions, and then during a tour of the Fulton County Jail. Um, in a, in a dictation that, I thought we were gonna, uh, bring, uh, Judge Fortes back to talk about the FTA, the FED, the peers in court, and, um, because the last time he, uh, gave a report to us, the FED, the peers had doubled, uh, from, I don't know, two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, I can't remember the exact, so, I, I just wanna make sure we're not moving too far ahead of the schedule that we set last week, so can you help me with that?
Yes, so, what this does, Ms. Winslow and, and any of my colleagues, we had the work session last week, as a matter of fact, the last thing I'm gonna discuss today is everything we talked about, existing work sessions, who actually closed the jail, the pros and cons, we're still in that debate to close the jail. This particular legislation talks about where we are from the beginning, when the jail was originally actually slated to close, and even not even closed, we're not even talking about closing the jail right now, is that the staff we had, that exists as we speak right now, who's running the jail, and the big question before, even as a part of our budget last year, was what happens in terms of the fact that we now have this decrease of employees at the jail in terms of running the facility, and what happens to those employees? And what Mr. Bartlett has laid out to us is, as we speak now, regardless of whether or not the jail is closed or not, if the jail closes, this hundred and thirty-eight people, they may go away soon, but right now, what is being proposed to us right now is actually the structure that is actually in place right now as we speak, in terms of how the jail is being deployed as we speak, and with that deployment, whether we close the jail now, we actually theoretically have a hundred and thirty, Mr. Bartlett, you can correct me, but that we have these folks already existing as we speak, and here's where we are, and that the recommendations are to, uh, validate that this is where we are at this point. If at some point the jail closes, we're gonna have to come back and say, well, what's gonna happen with those hundred and thirty-eight people, but here's where we are at this point, and here's what the structure is as we speak, where it's working, and that's what the report he's giving you, but that does not have anything to do literally with the, if we close the jail, we're gonna have to come back and have a whole nother discussion. So, that's what this is, and that was something that, that was actually asked of us from the time we start talking about, uh, whether jails exist as we are now. Mr. Bartlett, is that correct?
I, I think you, you did a good summary, Madam Chair, the one, uh, and, and thank you, Councilmember Winslow, for the question, I think the one thing I would just emphasize is that this, um, this plan was a request of council that was attached to the FY21 budget, and so, that is very much what we are trying to meet, as, um, Councilmember Shepherd, uh, stated, these actions or, or the pla- the plan here, this is quite separate from the other issues that were laid out in the work session around the jail closure pathway, and, and this is more related to the, specifically to the personnel plan that was, uh, a, a request attached to the FY21 budget.
So, theoretically, the number three yay is the people who really work at the jail right now, a hundred and thirty-eight, and is looking at the budget in terms of regardless of what happens, if the jail's closing, is that here's the savings from that right now, and that the savings is about two-point-three million dollars, even in terms of what we have right now, the proposal is says that of that savings, one-point-four million will go next year, starting in our next budget for twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, that one-point-four of the savings from all these doubts being, uh, alleviated, uh, will save, uh, we will put one-point-four of that permanently to the pre-arrest diversion center, we will put thirty-six or thirty-eight, the thirty-six or thirty-eight will go to the Atlanta Police Department for permanent security at Grady Hospital, and there will be eight hundred thousand left, that will be discussed further specifically for us to talk about, where we gonna put that money, are we gonna put it out in our communities for crime and public, it's still gonna be related to public safety, that money will still be related to public safety, but what we're saying with this funding that he's talking about now in terms of the redeployment is, this is what is happening right now as we speak, and so, regardless of what happens with ACDC closing, it will still have to come back for another discussion, does that make sense, Ms. Winslow? And again, the jail closing is a whole separate paper that we introduced as a separate paper that says, are we gonna close the jail, that's when we're gonna go into, Ms. Winslow, all this stuff again, in terms of having work sessions, and I'm gonna go with that schedule with you all before the end of this meeting to talk about those work sessions already been planned and all of that, and so, that will still continue to go forth.
Right, and thank you for that further explanation, and I do remember that there was, um, an amendment or an addendum onto the, uh, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget regarding these positions, so, thank you for that answer, my...
Okay, and, thank you. All right, you have any other questions, Ms. Winslow?
No, uh-uh.
All right, we have it aligned up, Mr. Hillis and Mr. Bond, so we'll start with Mr. Hillis.
Thank you, Chairwoman Shepherd, uh, thank you for the, uh, summary, Mr. Bartlett, uh, so, I believe I know what this paper does, I understand there's some sort of deadline possibly baked into the February first date, but, as you mentioned, there, this wouldn't actually do the reassignment, that would be in a personnel paper, which I don't think it's already been introduced, and if it's not, it wouldn't make it by February first, so, I'm just trying to, and there are, as was mentioned, a few other work sessions around ACDC, uh, related to other, other things, I mean, so, I guess my overarching question sort of the urgency, uh, to pass this paper, this resolution now, that doesn't actually do the reassignment now versus, uh, what we've had the other discussions surrounding ACDC.
Sure, and thank you for the question, Councilmember, so, um, I, I'll do my best to, um, explain it, and I'll also invite, uh, the, the Law Department if I, uh, if they need to correct what I say, but, um, when we adopted, or when council adopted the FY21 budget, um, they attached a requirement that the administration present a redeployment plan, um, by a date certain, and the date certain that was, uh, that we're working to, as you stated, is, is February first, so, the intention is not that we have executed on all of the elements contained in the plan by a... by February one. And you're right, that would require subsequent legislation to be introduced and then considered to effectuate those actions. So we are simply trying to meet that, meet that request and that requirement, and that's really to align on the content of this plan. Execution would take place at a future date through subsequent legislation. And again, I would ask if the law department has any, wants to adjust any of that, but that's my working understanding, council member.
I think as a follow-up, when was the personnel paper related to these matters in the resolution come forth?
I don't know that we have a certain date, council member, and certainly, you know, we'd be happy to work with you all and take guidance on that. But within the narrow scope of what we're proposing here, I think we could introduce, we could be in a position to introduce that relatively quickly. But obviously, if council needs time to think that through, then that would be at your discretion.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Bartley, and thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Hiller. Mr. Bond?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bartley, for your presentation. I guess my hesitancy comes in that I don't want to take any position that might endorse the plan that we discussed in the work session a week ago. As you know, I guess I've been the lone wolf on the council in not supporting the effort to close the facility, particularly when the advocates for closure have said that we needed all these programs to be implemented. And the issue, I guess, was space or wanting to do it in the space of the existing building when we have literally thousands of square feet of empty space that we can put programs in tomorrow. And I have a real concern about the way the employees of this department, who has done so much, particularly in the community and in the previous administration, in cleaning up our city, reaching out to our seniors, facilitating things for our youth, the way that they've been treated throughout this entire process. Members of the committee might recall when the announcement by the administration to essentially end their job was done without notice to them and on their very doorstep with the advocates who were clamoring for their jobs to end. And so they're there at work and then these announcements come out. I appreciate the administration wanted to respond to the council's request that we stipulated on the budget. But again, at the same time, you know, I feel some kind of weight about the way this has been handled, the way this process has gone on since the beginning, and I haven't liked it. I haven't liked that the people who worked and do sacrifice their lives in the job of corrections have been treated over the past four years. But having said that, I'm still reluctant to take any action on any paper until the council has resolved whether or not we're going to approve the plan that we talked about, you know, a week ago. There seem to be still a lot of moving parts that the administration has to present. There's still a lot of consideration, Madam Chair, that you mentioned, that this committee and the greater council has to consider. And then there's the larger regional issue as to whether or not we're going to, you know, yield to the concerns and the overtures of our former colleague and corrections chief, the new chair of Fulton County, who has reached out and expressed an interest in the facility and who might, if the negotiation merits, take on these very employees that we are seeking to put out a policy statement on that we might deploy elsewhere in city government. So I've got a lot of unreadiness, and, you know, I just, Commissioner Pitts, Chairman Pitts of Fulton County, there was an article today in our clips when he talked about how the city and county might merge their criminal justice and community reform efforts, you know, around this facility. And I think there's still a lot of conversations to be had, and, you know, I just, I'm just full of a lot of unreadiness. You know, I'm just hearing from members of the community, you know, from Bankhead to Buckhead, Prior Road to Piedmont, who really are just against the way the administration, the steps that they're taking. And people are very, very concerned about crime, they're very, very concerned about having cases in the community adjudicated, everything from street racing and shoplifting and prostitution in their neighborhoods. You know, I just, I don't know, I have a lot of unreadiness because I don't want the people who work in this department to feel put upon yet again that their jobs are gonna be eliminated and they're being swept under the rug and just stuck on the shelf in various places, you know, the way they've been treated over the last four years. And I don't know, I have a lot of unreadiness. I hope that we will resolve these larger issues before we take any position on some of these, I guess, sidebars. But I'm yielding.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Let me just clarify again, so I wanna, I wanna bring in Chief, the Chief of Corrections, Mr. Mitchell. He's here now. And I want, because let me, let me just say to y'all, if you look at item number twenty-four, and that is, that is legislation that literally talks about the closing of A C D C. This particular legislation is item number twenty-five, so two separate pieces of legislation. That one is still being held, closing the jail. That is not coming off the hells today, it will still be up for discussion, and that is tied to the work sessions that we're gonna have specifically on, and I'm gonna give y'all the dates for the work session. On February the fourth, we're proposing to have a work session on the evaluate, to evaluate the municipal court, closing of the jail and the municipal court impact. That will actually talk about the things we talked about at the work session last week that we went to deep discussion on in reference to, you know, doing a reevaluation of where we are with the municipal court and all of that. And Judge Portis will be leading that work session, so that will be discussion. On Thursday, February the eighteenth, we will have another presentation with Fulton County to evaluate the Fulton County jails and that whole discussion with Pat LaBott and folks from Fulton County to talk about the whole system in terms of that. So that will be on February the eighteenth. Then on March the fourth, we're gonna come back, the proposal is to come back to evaluate all of this into one. So this discussion today is again around something that we actually voted on as we did the budget last year to actually say what would happen to those employees at A C D C as they sit today. And over that whole time, things has already happened. And for me, the question that we'll also be asking is, how many employees are there right now left at Fulton County Jail as we speak? Last Saturday, not this Saturday, but Saturday before last, I went to the jail, and the administration is gonna be doing, by the way, also the tour of the jail as it exists today. So we have some dates that we're gonna be actually sending out to you all for you all to go and look at the A C D C as it exists today, how many employees there, what is the breakdown of their schedule, who they are. And also, even the proposal of where they are looking at if they close the jail, period, which I'm still having some concerns and questions about, where would those folks go in terms of the people that we have that we are actually having, who will actually come into our jail system now, where would those people go? So those are ongoing conversation that categorically is not a part of this. What I wanna ask Mr. Mitchell to do is to tell us how many, the structure now in terms of who's at the jail as we speak right now, and what he's supposed to, in terms of this recommendation from his employees. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, for Mr. Bartlett, just right now, what we have right now is those folks who are at the jail, 138 people left at the jail as we speak. The other question for Mr. Mitchell is what happens from the 200, what happened to those folks? From what I was saying, a lot of them left, a lot of them already, guess what, from what I was told, have already gone over to Fulton County and working from the jail system over there. So this is what is lost at this point. So I'd like to see if Mr. Mitchell is on the phone, if he could come and talk about the specifics in terms of this breakdown, along with asking Mr. Bartlett to come back. Is Mr. Mitchell there?
Ilan Caprow, Chair.
All right, can you just, yes, can you give some clarity in terms of who exists at the jail right now, and these numbers we're talking about?
Yeah, so I think I heard, you're cutting off a little bit, but I think I heard you say that about a 200 number that we started with, we're actually down to 169 at this point, 123 are sworn, 46 are civilian. I haven't seen a huge number leave to go over to Fulton County, but we do have folks that are eligible to retire that can go anytime. And Mr. Bartlett, I think that number is 26, if you correctly know that. But, so we are, the numbers are dwindling down. I don't think anyone would be without a job who doesn't, who wants a job. But we do have some people who are looking to get into something different, but I think the majority of the people will still be here with the city. As far as what's over here at the A C D C, I think if you take that, I have to look at that number, if you take 24 from that 123, I think that'll tell you what is sworn here at A C D C. And Mr. Bartlett, I don't have that form that you have, can you advise if that's correct?
I think that's about right, Chief.
Okay.
What you presented for Mr. Bartlett was numbers that talked about a breakdown of how many are sworn, how many are working in the kitchen, how many are doing other things. Is that correct, Mr. Bartlett? You have that breakdown for us again?
I do, I do, council member. And again, just for reference, there is a, there's a page in the attachment that breaks that down. So there's really, it's three buckets, and Chief, obviously, you jump in and keep me honest here, but three buckets. There's the security and booking posts that are 24/7 around the clock, and that accounts for the lion's share of the positions. There's a second bucket of sworn positions that are assigned to administrative functions, so that would include Chief Mitchell's position, as well as specialized functions associated with the facility. And then there is the third bucket, which includes the civilian. And so there are civilian folks performing important administrative functions, as well as medical staff, as well as the staff that prepares meals for people inside A C D C as well as outside A C D C, including the isolation hotel and the warming centers. So those are the three groups of employees that are reflected in the number.
In this proposal, in terms of where we are, in terms of this particular proposal saying that we will have, and when you break down that, and let me go back and see if I can find the breakdown, but that's 138 employees, is that correct, Mr. Bartlett?
That is correct. Yes, I can, absolutely. So the first bucket includes 17 booking and security posts, and so when we take account of the need to staff each of those posts for 168 hours a week, that accounts for a total of 77. The second group of sworn staff in that administrative grouping that I spoke to includes 13. And then the final group is the civilians I touched on, performing the different tasks, and that accounts for 48. And that, again, just, council member, that is laid out on, I believe it's slide 10 or slide 11, slide 11, I think, of the attachment.
So at this point, there is no plan to lay off these folks, get rid of these people, and let them go, period?
Correct.
Not at this point?
Correct.
Because that's what's running the jail as we speak. Is that correct? And that's what we're talking about in terms, in terms of this recommendation?
Yes.
Correct?
That is correct.
So, and if by chance the jail was come back and was closed, then we would have to have another discussion about what are we gonna do with these employees? Is that correct?
Yes.
So what we're trying to do right now is true up what we have at the jail as we exist today, and they work every day, all day long, and that's the number of people who are there.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Does that give you clarity, Mr. Bond, and you still take the same position? Mr. Bond?
For asking me a question, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I was saying, did that give you any more clarity, or are you taking the same position?
Well, how we got here, I mean, I'm well aware. But I guess my concern is, what are we doing, not only for the employees, but for the benefit of the city and those of us who are taxpayers in Atlanta and Fulton County? And so, you know, it's reassuring, and I said that in my earlier comments, that the administration is responding to our request, but I still don't like the way things have gone down. And I still don't like the direction that the administration and their plan that they put for us at the work session is going. So, you know, with that, I'll just vote my conscience today.
Okay. And, and Madam Chair, Winslow?
Yes.
That last couple of comments may have confused me more. So, so let me ask this question, because I just asked the motion. So what, what is the rush to get this done? And I'm not necessarily addressing it to you, Madam Chair, but we've got, and you've laid it out, about another 30 days of conversation to have, which I think is gonna be helpful to everybody, you know, just in terms of how we're feeling. And I think when we initially, initially put on the budget as an amendment or as a line item, whichever it was, I don't remember, we were in a different position, you know, just in terms of, and we talked about that, just in crime and everything. And that was last year in, I guess it's April of last year, so crime was down. So, I mean, I don't see where it would hurt to, you know, just take this up, I guess, looking at the other implications and having the work session. Because it's not gonna make any difference right now anyway, for the budget, this would be for the budget next year, right?
Yes. Well, Mr. Bartlett, you wanna answer that?
Sure. So that's essentially correct. The date that we are trying to meet, that council put in legislation in an ordinance was February one, and so that is the only, that is the driver of looking to move this paper at this time.
But we were still...
It was our mandate, it was not the mayor's mandate, it was really our mandate. But we kind of were, so we, yeah.
Right, I just think we were in a different position with different facts and information, and I'm kinda leaning, I'm leaning towards Councilmember Bond. We were, we were just in a, the city was just in a whole different status. We were, we were just in a di- the city was just in a whole different, uh, status, just in terms of crime and everything else. And I, I just don't want us to move too fast, uh, and I don't think thirty days is going to make that much of a difference. Uh, the budget isn't presented to us until mid-April. That would still give the administration thirty to do something and put pieces together, and then it, and they still have until June, because we don't pass the, you know, un- until, it doesn't have to pass until the last, last, uh, legal day in June of every year. So, I don't know if I want to withdraw my second, um, you know, I, I want people to feel comfortable, and if people aren't feeling comfortable, that's not good. You know, that means we're going to be all over the place. So I don't, I mean, I don't know, I, I, um, I think I want to pull my second, because I, I think we need to do it in a group, so that we all have an understand. I think there's a whole lot of unreadiness that was stated this week. And I don't know if February first is the magical day thing. Is it?
Well, I mean, Mr. Bartlett has already said, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bartlett, that's not, nothing going to happen if we do not do this. Is that correct, other than the fact that it will continue as is?
Correct. We would simply meet the requirement of the, uh, budget ordinance that imposed that date on us, which, for a plan to be approved, we would meet that date, we would not be executing on the actions contained in the plan, um, and so we would be looking at having to, one, come back to council with separate legislation at a later point in time, um, and then council could, uh, approve or not approve the specific actions contained in those, um, respective papers. And, um, I say papers plural, there is personnel element, so there would be a personnel paper, um, and then, uh, budget-related, um, matters in a separate paper. So hopefully that helps with the, the timeframe, um, Councilmember Shepard.
Right. So, based on the discussion, Miss Winslow, are you saying you're going to pull your second, or I think I made the motion to, to approve?
Right. I, I just, I, I just think that, um, you know, generally when personnel papers are presented, we don't, there's no resolution that goes with personnel papers anyway.
Um, this is not a personnel paper, Miss Winslow?
Well, I know, but she was talking about a personnel paper. This is in, in leading up to a personnel paper. That's what I thought I heard you-
Right.
Which would give them the, they should start doing a personnel paper. I, I mean, I don't think that makes a difference, but I don't know, I, I, I listened to my other colleagues.
All right, we do have a hand from Mr. Karoki.
Yeah, I, I was, I, I guess my question for you, Madam Chair, is if your motion still stands, and I believe it was your motion, I'm happy to, happy to second it in lieu of Councilman Winslow withdrawing her second.
Right. So at this point, you know, for me, it's not a, it, it was the motion, actually, it was even from the beginning with the budget. But I hear my two colleagues, there is no reason that we cannot hold this until we look at everything comprehensively at this point, unless the administration can tell us any differently, because they already operate all years as we speak. The only thing is, when we look at the budget for next year, we got to really look at this comprehensively, and I do believe that we got to do a whole assessment of all of this if we look at the budget. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Karoki. So if Miss Winslow decides to withdraw, we'll talk about it. I do see a hand from Mr. Hillis also. Mr. Hillis?
Thank you. Chairwoman Shepard just wanted to say that I'm, you know, I will support holding this, um, not given unreadiness, um, so I'll make that motion to hold.
All right. So, Mr. Hillis, second making the-
Second.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Ms. Bond.
Yes, Madam Chair, I, I definitely would, um, prefer if we would hold this. There are so many different elements that we need to work through, and I think we would feel better, um, there is certainly unreadiness at this point.
All right, well, the motion is to hold, and it's still on, so really, we talked about the, it, we would continue to hold it. So we don't have to do anything, we'll just continue to hold it. And I withdraw my motion to move forward. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
Aye.
So we're going to continue to hold the paper until we get through the work sessions and look a little farther down the road. All right? All right. So that's where we are with that, Miss Lindo, we continue to hold. Now-
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. And so again, we're going to go with the work session update. Uh, I said, I don't know if Miss Lindo has sent this out to everybody, but I have it in front of me, and I will read it again, uh, and I hope you sure I'll put this on your schedule, but you also have to make some decisions about the tours. So, again, the scheduled work sessions are for February the fourth, and that was with the minutes before, and that's going to be at one o'clock, and we'll be sending you information on that. Uh, that will be with Judge Cordes and his office over at the court system. The next work session will be February the eighteenth, the Fulton County, Mr., uh, Labot, and possibly some of the folks from the, from the court system over there, uh, to talk about what's happening with the court over there and how many people they have, so we're still working on that. The schedule after February the eighteenth. The next work session, after those two work sessions, will be to come back to talk about what we learned from those work sessions. Uh, but in between that, on February the eleventh or twelfth, uh, we are looking at a one o'clock or three-thirty or two to four-thirty P.M. tour, and that tour is on the municipal court and looking at ACDC one more time. Now, because we have restrictions in terms of COVID-nineteen, we can only do that, uh, participants in a number of eleven participants at a time. So we can't do that with a whole amount of us. I think if several members on, on our committee right now, if we did that, we could possibly have members from our committee to vote, to work on that. But any other council members who want to come, then we'll have to schedule another tour for them at a second time. So Miss Lindo will work on that. So what I need from you all, as she sends this out, for you all to give me a, a calendar, your calendar, in terms of your preference of those dates and times. And the same thing with Fulton County Jail, uh, we will look at the same thing in terms of that, in terms of that number and the tours and that also. So that's where we are. All right? Any questions about that? Still sending out.
Now, that hasn't been, but I thought I saw something saying February fourth.
Well, it's not, no, it's, uh, Miss Lindo, have you sent it out to every council member yet?
Not the tour dates, Madam Chair, the, the tour dates will be coming. I wanted to confirm the times that they should be accommodated, um, with the jail.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Could, could you send- Miss Lindo, could you send that February fourth information out again?
Will do, Madam, we'll, we'll do, Councilmember, that is the appointment for the work session, I'll be happy to send that out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, that is all we have before us at this point. And so, if we have nothing else for the good of the body-
Now do it.
Yes, Miss Smith.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Thank you, great meeting.
It's five o'clock, guys, five o'clock, let's leave, early.
Okay, you did good. Thank you.